Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Stratford City Council. I'll begin this meeting by bringing regrets on behalf of Council Ingram and Council Seven, and we'll just now take an opportunity for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to the clerks.
Your worship, item two is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting dated September twenty seventh and the special meeting dated September thirtieth of council of the corporation of the city of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Thank you. Moved by Council Ritzma, seconded by Council Henderson. Discussion. All those in favor? Close Fanny, and that's carried. Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addenda, and just prior to today's meeting, an addenda was circulated to add delegation and receipt of correspondence to the I T S committee agenda. And there is a motion that the addenda be added as printed.
By Council Burbak, seconded by Council Gaffey. Discussion. Not all in favor? Close Fanny, that's carried.
Item five is the report of the committee of the whole in camera session, and item five point one, at the September twenty seventh session under the municipal act, as amended, a matter concerning the following item was considered. Now with item six point one, proposed acquisition of property for part two on plan forty four R dash three nine six nine. Now, under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board exemption. And there is a motion that the mayor and clerk, for their respective delegates, be authorized to execute an agreement of purchase and sale for the undivided fifty percent share for part two on reference plan forty four R dash three nine six nine from Frank J. Walsh. Now, the corporation of the city of Stratford accept the transfer conveyance from Frank J. Walsh for the undivided fifty percent share.
Moved by Council Vazalaco, seconded by Council Clifford. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Close Fanny, it's carried.
Item five point two, just prior to today's session, an in-camera meeting was told to consider item four point one, proposed disposition of land in the train West Business Park under the proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board exemption, along with items five point one, purchase of service agreement, under the advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. And at the in-camera session, direction was given on both items. Moving to item six, hearings of presentations and deputations. Item six point one is a presentation by the Stratford Pride Community Center, and there is a motion that the delegation of Bruce Skeef regarding the Stratford Pride Community Center be heard.
Moved by Council Ritzma, seconded by Council Henderson. Mr. Skeef be heard. All those in favor? Close Fanny, and that's carried. And the clerk will let Mr. Skeef into the meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Skeef.
Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. Last Thursday, two days of work on a crosswalk outside City Hall's front doors was completed. That work was to repaint the crosswalk on our public square into the rainbow colors that are the international symbols of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transsexual, and more pride movement. Before daylight the next day, someone defaced it with a bucket of paint. The fact that someone was so afraid of that symbol that he or she would go to such an extreme demonstrates the power of that symbol. And the public response demonstrates the strength of their belief in the power of that symbol and what it stands for. Such actions of bigotry and prejudice always backfire. As Dr. Martin Luther King told us in nineteen sixty eight, the arc of the moral universe is long, but it tends to bend towards justice. Mr. Mayor, councillors, two years ago, a PhD student at the University of Western Ontario, a resident of Saint Mary's named Dana Prest chose as her dissertation a study of what it's like to be LGBT person in Stratford. She closely interviewed a diverse set of twenty-five residents over a period of time to discover and analyze tolerance and visibility, and whether these people had a sense of place, a good place, a safe place, a welcome place in Stratford. I spent my Canada Day this year reading this brilliant piece of work, and I urge anyone with an interest in the social welfare of our city to read all three hundred pages as I did. In chapter five is the meat of what she was told by these Stratford residents. Feeling disconnected, people feel that there's no consistent queer community here. There is more visibility and connection in June, but what about the rest of the year? A need for centralized, accessible information about the LGBT community in the area is a priority, she was told. Communications, there's a frustration over not being able to find out about events. Not everyone is on social media. People have a feeling of missing out on a specific event, but also in a general sense that they're missing out on the local queer community as a whole. This makes for a feeling of being disconnected and isolated, most particularly in those over sixty years of age. The specific barrier is a lack of networking, institutionalized support, and a lack of resources. Support networks are central to people's ability to survive and thrive in the area, and their ability to be confident and unaffected by potential intolerance, such as the defacing of the crosswalk last week. But insufficient resources have been a barrier to organizing in the Stratford area. A space, having space is important. Dedicated space that is not a bar and not shared with someone else. A lack of space is tied directly to costs and a lack of funding and/or support from the established organizations, especially in cold months when booking indoor space involves having to pay. While the limited size of the population here means it can be difficult to get sufficient numbers together for some organized events, simply having a presence, a drop in center, gives people refuge, friendship, a sense of belonging, and resources. The underlying point, they said, is not to stage events, but to create more space and connection for people actively looking for a sense of community or support. Purism was something that they talked about. Stratford is trying to invite more people, they acknowledged. The question must address how to do this and how to make people feel welcome when the main industry caters to, and these are their words, not mine, bold, rich, white people. Are we doing enough as a city to invite other people in? There are people here passionate about change, but how can we sustain it without explicit, honest financial support from the major players in town? That's where the incorporated nonprofit charitable organization that I represent comes in. The Stratford Pride Guide will gather together in one place everything you want to know about queer Stratford for people who live here, visit here, or are interested in moving here. It will be accessible every day of every month of every year. We're launching a campaign shortly. For a small donation annually, we can list a business or an organization in the Stratford Pride Guide and provide a Pride Guide sticker for their business window. We plan to have this completed in time for next year's season. Our vice president and our secretary treasurer have lived and worked in the hospitality business here for a total of over fifty years, and they know the rhythm of the city well. Secondly, Stratford Pride Community Center will be that bricks and mortar safe space to socialize, meet for coffee with friends, make new friends, find out what's going on. Come for a Friday night movie or a Sunday morning drag queen brunch. Sit and read a book from the lending library. It'll be that queer space that Stratford residents have been asking for. And it will be open as many days as community financial support will allow every week of every month of every year. We have made a, made strong and active connections with the businesses and social service organizations in the area, from the B I A to the Public Library to the Public Health Unit, to the Director of the Board of Education. We have a top-level connection at the festival. We have opened talks and have initial assurances to work together on bringing something new to Stratford. Winter Pride, each year starting in twenty twenty-three, will be a celebration of Love is Love over the Valentine's Day weekend centered on a Saturday night black tie event, dinner and a night of cabaret at the Tom Patterson Theater as a fundraiser to benefit Stratford Pride Community Center and the Pride Guide. The festival has already agreed to give us the theater for free under the community use provision. With the festival's name and involvement, we foresee attracting well-to-do LGBT residents from Toronto and other places, as well as locals, for a posh, romantic weekend in Stratford. We believe this will become a new highlight on the social calendar. We need your help too, your worship and councillors. We know that we're not eligible for a community grant until about a year from now. Most other government grants are out of our reach until then too. That's because we're a new organization. But you are the mayor and council. You have what Teddy Roosevelt called the bully pulpit of high office. We seek your public support. Tell people about us, encourage them to become our supporters, donors, and benefactors. Please work with us and help us fulfill the promise of that rainbow outside City Hall's front doors. Thank you very much for your time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. Any member of council having any question this time? I will, on behalf of council, express our profound regret at the incident that took place, and we appreciate the donation of time from various volunteers who helped not only install it, but also businesses involved in the cleanup, and to our own public work staff, as well as the fire department we are involved. We see that as a very visible sign of our inclusion quality and diversity program within our city of Stratford, and we look forward to continuing to work with Stratford Pride on future events. So thank you for your work as well, Bruce, in leading that. Anything further this time from members of council? Bruce, we appreciate it, and we will continue to work with you on not only your Pride Guide, but also on location and community facility, and we will be in touch.
Thank you.
All right, have a good evening. Madam Clerk.
Your worship, item seven is part of the day, and item seven point one is a resolution regarding the response to calls to action in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission Report. And the first item listed on the agenda is to hear from Lorena McKennitt on behalf of Wise Community Stratford.
Thank you. Council Vazalaco is moving and seconded by Council Burbak. Ms. McKennitt be heard. All those in favor? Close Fanny, that's carried, and the clerk will let Ms. McKennitt in. And we'll wait for her to join us. Ms. McKinnon.
Your worship, we are just working to get her connected.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, your worship and councillors, and thank you for allowing me to present my thoughts before you today. Although my appearance outlines a request that the city of Stratford designate September thirtieth as a statutory holiday for city employees, I'd like to take this opportunity to clarify and broaden that request by respectfully calling on this day to be taken as one of observance, learning, and reconciliation in acknowledgement of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's call to action number eighty. It is important to know that the government of Canada led the way this spring by designating this day as a federal day of observance, no doubt with the hope that the provincial and municipal governments would follow suit without delay. In preparation for this meeting, I had a chance to review the report, which the city published on Friday, October eighth, and I was heartened by how much broader it went than only supporting this one call to action, but rather many calls to action. This falls very much in line with what other communities across the country are doing. Further, I was able to locate a few documents which are designed to help municipalities through this process in a thoughtful way, and I'll forward them to you and staff in the event you are unaware of them. They include a guide by the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association and an article in Municipal World by Sean Meyer called Municipalities Taking Action to Support Truth and Reconciliation. A few years ago, the municipality of Wood Buffalo wove their commitment to implement the calls to action into their two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one strategic plan. And then there's the National Centre for Truth and Reconciliation in Winnipeg, which is set up to guide communities on calls to action which fall under the influence of municipalities. But we know just designating a day is only the first step. We know that to complete this small but meaningful call to action is to commit ourselves to support and facilitate a broad program of education and awareness building conceived out of collaboration with indigenous community members and which deserves to go on around the calendar year. We know there are many constituencies who would benefit greatly from such a program. They include indigenous children in our area who are currently in foster care and their parents. There are indigenous community members themselves who are greatly harmed in the residential school systems through which they lost their families, traditional culture, language, and their connection with the land, and continue to endure intergenerational trauma. Quite nobly and rich with resilience, many are working hard to reclaim that which was lost or taken from them, and we must do everything we can to support that. And of course, there are the non-indigenous citizens of this country who feel failed, if not betrayed, by an education system which has kept much of this startling and dark chapter of our history from us. Most certainly, there is a significant role for schools and ministries of education going forward. What also must not be lost is the connection of the environment to indigenous cultures, in particular to those who never lost their connection to the land, the sea, and the natural world. In our path of dealing with and understanding our response to climate change, our planet's greatest existential threat, we will need to learn from and work together with indigenous communities across this country and around the world. I understand that council's infrastructure, transportation, and safety committee will be discussing how far to go with its greenhouse gas reduction plan. Indigenous peoples understood far more than many of us that there is only one planet, and it does need to be taken care of. Turtle Island, where we all live, is in great peril. It cannot withstand any more greenhouse gas emissions, and Stratford has as much a duty of care to Turtle Island as the indigenous peoples who lived here before us and are amongst us now. And I would urge the city to take the strongest steps possible to reduce and eventually eliminate the threat to our joint home. We are living in a time of much reckoning, with a need of much reconciling. A reconciling with the colonial past, which, although in the most part was not of this generation's doing, should we do nothing going forward, we will indeed be complicit in perpetuating this unconscionable harm. With this firmly in mind, I would call upon this council to adopt the recommendations of staff toward the calls to action and to do it without delay. The Truth and Reconciliation Commission's report came out six years ago. Former Senator Murray Sinclair said that when he was writing it, he did so with the intention of arming the reasonable. No, September thirtieth is not an occasion to declare a holiday. It is clearly an annual day of reasserting our commitment to observe, learn, and build a path of truth and reconciliation through multiple efforts and initiatives across this country for many years to come. In the face of all that was endured and is endured still, and in light of the environmental catastrophe before us and how it connects indigenous and non-indigenous people alike, to embark upon this path of reconciliation seems like a necessary and meaningful ask, and I know this council will not find it in their hearts to refuse. Thank you very, very much for your time this afternoon.
Thank you very much, Ms. McKennitt. The C O, a moment for some brief remarks. I'll turn to order.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I just wanted to mention that with respect to the designation as September thirtieth, before you today, you have the report from staff that has been put together in response to the Truth and Reconciliation recommendations, and you will be considering that momentarily. And just speaking to some of the work that's already underway in the city of Stratford, as you know, we have started our work that is needed to identify the barriers and gaps and how we are going to meet our obligations and our responsibilities with respect to truth and reconciliation, as well as diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. We are working already on a plan that we need to put together. We have retained Diversapro to help us internally with the work, and that has begun. And for those of you who are familiar with the name of Diversapro, they are the consulting firm that assisted the festival theater a number of years ago with respect to the work that they started. So as I said, the plant, the report that you have today is just part of the work that is already underway. And with respect to observing September thirtieth as a national, as a statutory holiday, we are already looking at that regardless of what the province does with respect to September thirtieth. I can say that that is something that we have already internally been considering here at the city of Stratford. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. Is there any questions as to the presentation or the motion listed under this item? Counselor Gaffey and Council Burbak.
So if you're looking for someone to make the motion, Mr. Chair, I would certainly do that on the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Seconders, Council Burbak. Discussion. Council Burbak.
Thank you. Thanks to staff and to Ms. McKennitt for the present, for the report and the presentation that she made. I do have a couple of questions, clarification. So on item eighty, the call to action, I'm just wondering if we would need, based on Ms. Thompson's comments, to add to our city of Stratford response that we are investigating making a statutory holiday for city employees on that date, just to add it into the report so that it reflects what staff's currently doing? I had another question about the territorial acknowledgement. So I see in the report that it's being worked on, and I was just wondering if we could get an update on how that's progressing?
Thank you. I'll turn that over to Ms. Thompson. If she could give us an update.
Through you, your worship, I'm wondering if perhaps the city clerk or the deputy clerk could respond to that.
Through your worship, I would be happy to. With respect to number eighty, we can certainly add some additional language into that section that we are currently investigating it as part of our work on the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Plan. With respect to the territorial land acknowledgement, we have proceeded to draft three options, and we are working to consult with indigenous organizations and communities at this time. Our goal is, once we've completed that process, we will launch it or release it to members of the public and then bring it back to council for final approval. So council will see the draft acknowledgements along with a learning guide.
Excellent. Thanks very much for the update. I did have one more thought because I have talked to some indigenous residents in Stratford, and I was asking them how they felt about how things were going in Stratford and what it was that they might need. And one thing that was consistent was that they would like to have a place to gather, a place of healing. So that's something that I would like the city to consider, and there's two possibilities, or maybe both can be done, not necessarily an either or. One would be a place to gather indoors, which would be a center similar to what we just heard from the Pride Organization, a community-type space where they could gather and have ceremonies. That's one possibility. Another one would be to create a medicine garden within, somewhere within our park system or our public land system in Stratford, and that would produce a place that could be used for educational purposes. So a lot of the calls to action talk about education and schools and employees and other organizations in Stratford could use something like a medicine garden to be a central gathering place. So I'm not quite sure if that fits into this report or these responses. So I'm just looking for some guidance. If this is something that needs to be referred possibly to community services, or if it can be included in this current report.
If I could, I think it should go back through a community services so we can identify lands and areas for programming and scheduling. I'll look to the clerk or the C O to correct me on that, but I would think that would be the proper process for that piece. Ms. Thompson.
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I would suggest that if we could have a seconder for the motion to refer it to community services, and then staff could take that and report back.
Council Henderson is going to second that. So we'll continue on with the referral of that list of ideas to go to community services for review of space. Anything, because it's referral, we don't normally have discussion, but is there anything further? All right, all those in favor of the referral? Thank you. We're back on the original motion. Is there anything further on it? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Close Fanny, and that's carried. Thank you.
Item seven point two is the resolution regarding the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program COVID-nineteen Resilience Infrastructure Stream, and there is a staff recommendation that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the transfer payment agreement for the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program COVID-nineteen Resilience Infrastructure Stream, local government intake on behalf of the corporation of the city of Stratford.
Council Vazalaco and Council Bunty moving seconded. Discussion. All in favor? Close Fanny, that's carried.
Item seven point three is a proclamation for Light It Up for N D E A M Day, and there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one as Light It Up for N D E A M Day in the city of Stratford and recognition of National Disability Employment Awareness Month. In the many ways, people who have a disability contribute to businesses and communities across Canada.
You. Moved by Council Ritzma, seconded by Council Vazalaco. Discussion. All those in favor? Close Fanny, and that's carried.
Item eight, business with previous notice have been given and there's none scheduled. Moving to item nine, reports with standing cities. Item nine point one is the report of the Social Services Committee, and there are two items listed for consideration that follows. Item nine point one point one, two thousand twenty-one homeless enumeration, and item nine point one point two, update on the Ontario Works caseload and caseload forecast for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Counselor Henderson will move and seconded by Council Vazalaco. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Close Fanny, and that's carried.
Item nine point two is a report of the Community Services Committee, and there are six items listed for consideration that follows. Item nine point two point one, request to reduce the number of citizen representative positions on the Communities and Blum Advisory Committee. Item nine point two point two, Saturday On-Demand Transit Service Item nine point two point two, Saturday On-Demand Transit Service Update. Item nine point two point three, Ad Hoc Transit Committee Update. Item nine point two point four, request to develop a strategic master plan for recreational services. Item nine point two point five, distribution of renewable use of the Stratford Agroflex Field Council. And item nine point two point six, Stratford Pickable Association Youth Initiative.
Counselor Beatty, you'll move his chair. Counselor Bunting, you'll second. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried.
Item ten is noted with intent. Item ten point one is noted with intent to declare a surplus and dispose. At the October 25th regular council meeting, city council intends to declare the following city-owned land as surplus to the needs of the corporation and disposal of land. And that is Part Lot Two, Plan Eighty-Six, known meaningfully as Fifty-One McNabb Street. The city-owned land is vacant and is owned residential second density and bordered by McNabb and Bridge Street. And the property is not a built-in lot in its own. The council meeting begins at three P M via Zoom. And questions about the subject and plans may be made to the city clerk at clerks@stratford.ca before October 19th.
Thank you.
Item eleven is reading of the bylaws, and there are three bylaws listed as follows. Item eleven point one is to authorize the execution of the transfer payment agreement for Canada Infrastructure Program funding. Item eleven point two is to authorize execution of agreement of purchase and sale with Frank Walsh. Item eleven point three is to authorize the acceptance of conveyance from Frank Walsh.
Those bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Moved by Counselor Beatty and second by Counselor Burbak. Discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's unanimous. So we'll vote a first and second reading of bylaws eleven, one through three. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Vazalacos. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. And third and final reading, Counselor Gaffney, second by Counselor Bunting for bylaws eleven, one, two, and three. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried.
Item twelve, the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Counselor Bunting and Counselor Burbak.
Yes, I have, I would like to endorse C A twenty twenty-one dash one two four. It's the Save Eye Care Ontario from Kingsville. And I can attest to being a victim of this particular situation myself. My wife and I were scheduled to be doing our eye tests tomorrow. But that has been put on hold for an indefinite period of time. I find it almost unbelievable that optometrists were, have got a a nine percent raise over thirty years with respect to the payment they receive from the province of Ontario. Accordingly, a lot of seniors like ourselves will be without eye care. And the other thing that I find almost unbelievable is that that even if we want to pay for our, our, the examination and and, and pay for everything, all the services, we're not able to do that because apparently that's in the agreement. But if you're over a certain age, at least that's what we have been told by our optometrist. So certainly I would endorse them. I would ask my fellow counselors to, to go with me on this. Thank you.
Second for that, Counselor Burbak. Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that is carried. Counselor Burbak, I recognize your hand next.
Thank you. Yes, it was for the same item. I also have, my parents and my children actually are affected by this. So hopefully the provincial government will see fit to resolve it soon.
Thank you. Anything further on the consent agenda? If not new business? All right, Counselor Henderson, Gaffney, and Beatty.
I'd apologize because I didn't send this out earlier, but I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to staff, that we look into having presenters in our meetings actually zoom in so we can actually see their face. And so can the public when they're doing presentations. As we all know, when you just talk to somebody on the phone, it's really not the same effect. And I've heard different comments from people how it's a little hard to do. You have to push number six and that. So I'd like to look into that. We could have people, and I know there's a way to do that with Zoom. You can bring them in, you can see them, they can do their presentation, they can leave. I'd like to make that motion that we have staff look into that, please.
I'm going to turn it over to the clerk because that is already offered to people. So before we go into further, the clerk should comment on it.
Oh, so through your worship, just to clarify, so presently delegations are only permitted to speak via the telephone. And that is because not all members of the public have the ability to participate via video. And so in order to make it fair across the board for all delegations, we've offered them that opportunity because almost all members of the public have a telephone. We can certainly look into that, but that is the reason why delegations are permitted to participate over the phone and are not brought in via video at this time.
I think if, even if we have both options, because I think, you know, I think there's what, ten to fifteen percent that don't have that Zoom option or it doesn't work well. But I, I, I prefer when I'm talking to somebody on Zoom. Because if we were having council meetings, you could see their face and, you know, be able to interact that way. And I would, you know, look forward, hoping somebody would second my motion.
Counselor Burbak, you're seconding that. The only other item I'd ask clerks, that we look at maybe doing technical practices ahead of time so that we can make sure that their equipment works in advance of meetings. Anything further? Counselor Vazalacos, did you anything on that before we call the question?
I, I will actually reiterate the city clerks' issues around equity and, and what we offer. If, if there will be members of the public that don't have access to Zoom technology or don't know how to use it. And, you know, it may make them feel like at a disadvantage if they're unable to do so. And so there are some equity issues around that. But then I, I also, you know, I, I also, Zoom does have an element of coming into people's private spaces as well. And so we, we, I think we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we're asking to see citizens, but that we are also making citizens somewhat vulnerable on the space that they share with us. And not everyone has the option to blur their background or knows how everything else. So there are some tricky issues around offering it or then expecting it of the public as well.
Thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. I think having both options would keep it more equitable because there are people who would struggle with the phone technology as well. I know that I've talked to some people that found it very frustrating. So I, I think being able to give people the option would be good. And if we can make it as close to an in-person type experience as possible, I think that's, that's to our advantage and that serves the public better. Because normally in an in-person meeting, they would be able to speak to us face to face. And there, there is an element there that of communication that's missing when they're just having to speak on the phone. So I'm going to support the motion.
You. Anything further? Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Counselor Gaffney, you were next.
Thank you, worship. I may have to apologize because I'm not sure if I'm doing this in the right place or not. But I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the COVID-19 policy that we approved a couple of weeks ago.
Okay, so you're asking for a motion to reconsider?
Yes, please, your worship.
Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Clifford? I'll open the, some motion to reconsider. So all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That motion carries. Counselor Gaffney, I'll leave the floor to you to present what you'd like to reconsider.
Yes, thank you, worship. This is my own thoughts on it. And, and I'm basing my request on feedback I've gotten from the public that, that there's a feeling that we're not being strict enough on on people that don't get vaccines and their exposure to the public. So I, I, I just wanted to bring it back up for discussion again.
Thank you. I maybe asked the C O. To give some background of how corporate leadership arrived at the recommendation. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. So with respect to the, and I, I just want clarification. We're talking about the vaccination policy that applies to employees, volunteers, contractors, and members of council?
Yes.
Okay. So just to give you a bit of background on how that policy began. It was mandated by the province for our licensed daycare. So we, we put together a policy following the mandates that by the province of Ontario through the Ministry of Health that required mandatory disclosure of vaccination status. And then for those who were not fully vaccinated, there is a requirement for education as well as regular testing. And this is in addition to all of the other requirements that we have already in place for occupational health and safety in the workplace. And that includes, we have Plexiglas barriers, we have PPP in place. We have social distancing as well as hand sanitizers. So that was mandated for our daycares, and so we put that in place. As we were developing that policy in accordance with the mandate set by the province, we decided that it would be equitable and fair to roll out that same policy for all of our city employees. So that's what we did. We consulted with our union executives with respect to that policy. And so we, we have that in place. We rolled it out. And we are, have a deadline of next week for employees to disclose their, their status. I can say that at the, the daycare, we are already in full compliance with that policy where we have disclosure. And we are already using the education as well as doing the, the testing in addition to all of the other requirements that we have in place to protect not just our employees, but people who are coming into our facilities. So that is the, the background on it. There is no consistency from employer to employer as to which approach they're taking. But we felt that this was an appropriate policy to put in place. It is following the mandate set by the province for the daycares. And we rolled it out across the municipal corporation. And as you said, if there is anything further, I would be pleased to, or perhaps the director of H R could fully respond as well.
I'll ask Ms. Kirkos to say a few words.
Yeah, through your worship, in response to Counselor Gaffney, one other thing that I would point out, you know what I mean? That Joan has not mentioned, or sorry, the C O. Had not mentioned is that we still don't understand who's unvaccinated. And i- in, in light of the public's concern over, you know, the interaction with our staff, once we've determined that, we'll understand whether there is any contact. Because at, at present, we, we don't know that. And, and you know, we're talking about the rest of the city. There will be instances where some people that are unvaccinated would not have any contact with citizens naturally. And then as well, you know, we also examine the way that people can access our services. You know, once we have a, a better handle on, you know, staff that are unvaccinated and, you know, not putting them, putting anybody in a precarious position, including the staff member that's unvaccinated. So those considerations will be made once we understand who's unvaccinated. And thus far, you know what I mean, people are moving forward and complying and responding. So, you know, I'm seeing little resistance, if any, from the staff members, you know, I mean, in terms of doing what we've asked them to do. And I, I'd be assured that if there is anybody that refuses, you know, I mean, the city, you know, would turn, turn its course, as we've indicated in the policy, to our disciplinary process. So we, we've established that as well. But from the standpoint of citizens and serving them, we're, we're yet, it's yet an unknown. You know, how many people we have that are unvaccinated? And then, you know, whether they would have any public contact whatsoever. And then as well, I, I would say that the C O. Has been clear in terms of some of the other measures that we have in place that we are, we're adhering to, including a mandatory mask policy that we implemented with the, with the vaccination policy. And that's for the public and for employees within our facility. So it's no longer an option. It's mandatory to wear, wear that and, you know, have that on. Which I think is also very important.
You. I see Counselor Clifford's hand.
Yeah, I was going to ask, have all municipalities in Toronto, or all municipalities in Ontario had the same policy? I've been listening to places like Toronto and like the transit. It seems to me in some areas, if employees will not get, if, if they will not get vaccinated, like as far as getting paid, like if the job, city job and the bus or maybe a police officer or whatever. I, I just wonder, are all municipalities, have they all got the same policy, policy that Stratford has? Or, or, or other municipalities enforcing it a lot tougher than Stratford is?
I would say there is a divide, you know what I mean? Some of the elements of the policies are very similar, like disco, disclosure. And then some employers have taken the approach that, you know, they would add those extra safety measures similar to what we've, we've established. And then there are other employers that have taken a stronger position on this. But it isn't, it isn't consistent. Because it hasn't been mandated, mandated.
Thank you.
Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Burbak.
Sorry, I, I was just thanking and acknowledging the information.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Let's have a question, just maybe remind me from the policy. If we determine that a, a certain staff member is not vaccinated and they do have a public-facing position, are we then able to maybe suggest that they work somewhere else that isn't as public-facing? That, that would protect the public?
Through your worship, in response to Counselor Burbak, exactly that, you know what I mean? So once we've determined who's unvaccinated, then we'll, we'll look at risk. And one of those risks is, okay, do we put them in, in line with the public? Or do we reposition or relocate them? So if you look at our policy, it clearly states it's a number of things that we can work with the employee to do so that nobody's put at risk, including that employee.
Thank you. That, that's what I thought.
Counselor Vazalacos.
And remind me again on the policy, if we do have an outbreak, can we actually send an employee home without pay who is not vaccinated? I know that is something that is done to protect, protect both their, the coworkers and, and anybody they may be interacting with. It's a fairly common during influenza season if there's outbreaks in facilities. And I'm wondering if that would be an additional. I know the policy is very open-ended in, in allowing there to be any administrative policy that's required to protect the public and coworkers. Could that, would that be something that would fall under that as well?
Yes, that, that is part of our, through your worship, that is part of our policy as well. We would remove the person from the work area that is not vaccinated.
Anything further on this item? Counselor Vazalacos.
Sorry. And just as a backup, I know that the Medical Officer of Health has stated that rapid testing in unvaccinated employees should be daily. I'm wondering what our policy currently looks like and whether we would be taking guidance from public health on how frequent the testing would be to be in line with what their recommendations would be for safety.
We, through your worship, in response to Counselor Vazalacos, we are doing testing every seventy-two hours. And also remember, there are various schedules throughout the, throughout the city, very much like the firefighters. They're not on a, a similar schedule to a work schedule as others. So they, they would be tested before their shift, you know what I mean? So we're taking into consideration how people work within the city and what their schedule, schedule is like.
And then sort of consulting with public health on what a reasonable testing strategy would be, given those schedules?
Correct.
Okay.
If it's possible, and Ms. Kirkos, if you could just identify that we are currently doing the census of our own employees and give the rough idea of the timeline for members of council, so they know when that will be reported back.
Through your worship, the timeline is October twenty-seventh.
Thank you. Counselor Clifford, then Counselor Vazalacos.
Yeah, I, I was going to, I was going to ask this and- Yeah, I I was gonna, I was gonna ask this, and possibly it's already been answered. But does it, does it, does our policy for Stratford, does it affect the library? Our hydro company, um, STA and SSEED? That doesn't affect all the ones that are directly connected with the city of Stratford? Is it same policy or do they have to have their own, including the police board and like that?
Uh, the library would be under our umbrella. Um, Hydro has implemented their own policy and the police are doing the same.
Anything further? Councillor Vazalacos and councillor Gaffney.
Um, I I will say, I said, one of the things that I would like, um, separate from an administrative policy, which involves HR and everything else. I do think the council could go when, like, if if we're talking one step further. I think that we could, as council, decide that a councillor should be fully vaccinated to attend in-person meetings. Given that we do have the Zoom option to zoom in. And while like, you know, there's, there's a, a, a whole other, um, you know, level of dealing with. Employees and workplace, um, issues and unions and everything else. I'm wondering whether, um, there would be a subject for requiring, not only for councillors to meet the current policy. But for councillors that are unvaccinated to, um, attend meetings remotely when the, when we go back to in person.
Thank you. Councillor Burbak.
I was going to second that uh, motion, if that's, if that's the correct moment to do it, sorry.
Okay. Councillor Vazalacos, if you could just uh, word the motion exactly as you'd like, I'll make sure the clerk and the deputy clerk here.
Yep, just that, that when council meetings resume in person, that council members that are not vaccinated. Or who refuse to disclose their vaccination status will continue to attend meetings remotely.
Seconders councillor Burbak. Thank you. Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, what about if a councillor? He is not comfortable coming in based on the information we received after October twenty-second. And this is going along with what Kathy's just moved and seconded by.
Councillor Vazalacos.
That brings up an interesting, um, question around, um, council meetings where the public is present. My assumption would be that if we have staff present at council meetings in person. Where the public have been asked to show ident, like their, their vaccine passports for attendance. Then I think that would, I I think from, from a risk perspective. I think there could be an argument, not only that the councillors are, are vaccinated and present. But that anyone who is present at a public meeting, um. Uh, have be vaccinated or or attend remotely, since we have that option. So that's an interesting extension of not just council, but anyone present at a public council meeting in person.
Okay. So if you'd like to maybe alter the wording of your motion? That it be anyone that attend an in-person council meeting, whether it be council staff or public. Be double vaccinated?
Yeah, have that be, while not double, fully vaccinated, full series of vaccination, because it'll alter depending on the age of the person in their, in their medical status. But, yes, yeah.
Councillor Burbak, you agree to that change? Councillor Gaffney, does that meet the spirit of what you were asking? Thank you. Anything further on that motion as it's put forward? All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's Carrie. Thank you, councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, your worship. Just to expand on councillor Clifford's question from earlier. Uh, when, for example, CD or the BIA or the tourism. Uh, destination Stratford, uh, makes a policy, is that policy vetted? Through the city of Stratford so that it reflects what the city's policy is? Because some of these boards have started asking for in-person meetings and. And I say this from on my own behalf, I'm still not comfortable in, for in-person meeting yet. So, uh, I I would like to better understand that these outside boards. Are following our protocols. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson or Mr. Fo. Any input into that with regard to working with our outside boards and committees?
Um, through your worship, um, so in response to the, the question, uh, we can certainly reach out to the boards. I I will say that again, um, any of the policies that they have already in place. Uh, may not necessarily have been run through the the city. Um, but I know that some of the HR related policies do come through the the HR. So I will take this back and uh, and discuss it with the, the acting director of of HR. And we will follow up with the various outside boards and committees and request their, uh, their current policies.
Anything further? Councillor Gaffney.
I I just wanted to thank everyone for, uh, uh, indulging me on this. And and to say, hopefully this, this, uh, gives people, uh, Rogersland. Uh, you know, hopefully they have a better understanding and a better comfort with, uh, where this is going. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, councillor BD, I believe you had your hand up under your business as well.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to provide council with an update on Communities in Bloom. Last Thursday was the National Communities in Bloom, that, or Annual Symposium. It was held virtual, uh, as it has been for the last two years. As everyone is aware, Communities in Bloom, the national program has been different over the last two years, uh, due to COVID. Uh, however, uh, this year, the National CIB put out a challenge. Uh, be being mindful of the fact that judges were unable to come to communities. They they put out the Hope is Growing Challenge. And our committee of Stratford's Communities in Bloom, uh, rose to that challenge and and took it to heart to. To demonstrate hope is growing in our community. We looked at the various challenges that were put forward. Uh, two of them came to mind and and one was the national competition for for the Hope is Growing. And one was also, uh, for best, uh, front yards. Our committee identified several front yards that were outstanding in our city. Uh, one was identified and that was Bernie Van Hurk, uh, here on street. We submitted an application and we're very proud to say that Mr. Van Hurk's front yard was determined to be the best. Or received the award for the best, um, front yard in 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 Canada. For, um, all his work that he does for individuals that aren't familiar with Mr. Van Hurk's property. He's located on here in street across from, um, best location is, it's a cross from the beer store. He has an amazing, uh, front yard and every year does so much to, to showcase hi- his passion for, for Stratford. And his love of gardening and we're very proud of all the efforts and the fact that, uh, CIB identified it as without it out. The best front yard in Canada. Um, so we're very proud of that. Uh, furthermore, our, our very own application for this city. Um, I'm very proud to say, and I'll read from the press release from, from the, the symposium on Thursday. Uh, several registered Communities in Bloom committees entered the Hope is Growing Contest and all showcased their spectacular, spectacular efforts. To each and every one of you and your teams of volunteers, congratulations. Your efforts paid off and your entire communities have been brightened this past summer, thanks to the time and love you donated in order to spread hope. While all your entries were good and notable, there can only be one winner. I am proud to announce that the winner of the Hope is Growing Registered Community Contest is the city of Stratford. Stratford did an incredible job with their several hopes and growing initiatives. And they identified all of them that we did. This was a spectacular effort by all and highly deserving of their grand prize. So I'm very proud to share that Stratford once again demonstrated our level of showing hope. Hope is growing and and, uh, again, our, our, uh, our efforts are, are, are known throughout. The throughout the nation and very proud to share that. So, um, thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you very much and congratulations to you and your colleagues on the committee. It's outstanding news. And I would say Mr. Van Hurk does have the best law in Canada. All right. Anything further? If not, we take a motion to adjourn to convene in committee and the first one is planning and heritage. Councillor Bunting and councillor Burbak. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and and I will call the meeting to order. I am having a little bit of trouble with my audio, so I apologize in advance. And, um, I'll also indicate that councillor Ingram has provided regrets for this meeting. Item number two, disclosures of pecuniary interests. From council, seeing none. Moving on to item number three, subcommittee minutes are there from the September thirtieth. Uh, for, for your review, delegations, uh, number four, non-scheduled. Number five is reported to the manager of planning. Five point one is planning report zoning bylaw amendment application Z zero nine dash two one. Which is the property of three seven nine Ontario Street. And I believe Ms. Bridge is available to give a brief overview before we go to our, our applicant, owner and applicant. Ms. Bridge?
Uh, through the chair, good afternoon. Um, can everyone see the slide deck on the screen in front of them?
That's great. Thank you.
Perfect. Uh, so you have before you this afternoon for consideration, uh, zoning bylaw amendment zero nine dash twenty-one. Uh, for three seventy-nine Ontario Street. Uh, the purpose of the application is to amend the existing mixed-use residential zoning. To a site-specific mixed-use residential zone that would permit a hobby shop and as an additional permitted use. Uh, the subject property is municipally addressed as three seventy-nine Ontario Street. It's located on the south side of Ontario Street between Front Street and Queen Street. And it has an approximate area of zero point zero four five hectares. Um, there's a concept plan, uh, on the screen in front of you. So the changes are proposed internal to the existing building and the proposed use is proposed on the ground floor of that building. Uh, the subject lands are designated residential area in the official plan. And the lands are also within special policy area two, uh, where a mix of residential, commercial and institutional uses are encouraged. Um, specifically within this special policy area two, commercial uses are restricted and generally limited to office uses. Specialty retail shops and small restaurants that have limited parking, parking requirements. Uh, the requested use of a hobby shop would be considered a specialty retail shop and would conform with the policy direction for special policy area two. Um, the subject lands are currently zoned mixed-use residential. And there's a variety of residential and commercial uses permitted, including, um, a dwelling unit, a personal care establishment. A home occupation, a clinic and a business office. And the amendment is requesting to add an additional use for the subject lands being a hobby shop. Uh, the proposed definition would be an area of the building in which video games, card games, board games or similar products are offered for sale. Uh, the proposed amendment sets a maximum floor area for the proposed use of sixty-one meters square. And restricts its location to the ground floor. The application was circulated to various agencies in July of this year. And no comments or concerns or objections have been received to date. Um, the notice of application was also sent to a hundred and eight abutting property owners in July of this year and published in the Beacon Herald. The public meeting was held in August of this year and no public comments have been received to date. Uh, planning staffer of the opinion that the zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement. Conforms with the official plan and the intent of the zoning bylaw. And it's consistent with the city's strategic priorities and represents good planning. Uh, that is all I have with for you formally this afternoon and I'd be pleased to take any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Questions from the committee. Councillor Clifford?
I will move staff recommendation.
Um, if I may, councillor Clifford, I will take that movement. But I I see that item number two is that Michelle Little and Michael Costello would like to be heard. But I will certainly accept that. Uh, councillor, uh, councillor Clifford, will you move that they be heard?
Absolutely.
And a seconder for that, councillor Burbak, thank you. All in favor? And that's carried. And I turn to the clerk, are they, is Ms. Little and Mr. Costello available?
Through the chair, we are working to connect them right now.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you, your worship, and council members for hearing us today. Uh, we just wanted to provide a little bit of information about the store. Um, we estimate that there will be between five to ten customers a day that we're open. Um, so we don't anticipate there being an increase in any local traffic. Um, knowing that we are right on the main road on Ontario Street. Um, we do have four existing parking spots, uh, at the rear of our building. Um, which are paved and, uh, we do have snow removal as well. So don't anticipate any impact to the surrounding area there. There are no plans to make any structural changes, um, either inside or outside of the building as well. And, um, we've been in touch with some members of the video game and Magic the Gathering card game, uh, community. And everybody seems to be very excited about the possible opportunity of a new location.
Thank you, Ms. Little. I'm going to turn to the committee. Any questions for Ms. Little or Mr. Costello? Seeing none, once again, thank you very much for your presentation. Moving back to the, the motion that, uh, is presented, councillor Clifford, you are going to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make stuff like that.
Thank you, and I see councillor Gaffney, you're going to second that motion? Thank you. I have a question, councillor Gaffney?
I do, Mr. Chair. Uh, I guess the one thing I want, I want to ask about is. Uh, the, whatever signs being put up on the building will go through, uh. The normal steps and stuff, I just being where it is, heritage corridor and stuff. That we'd have to be sort of aware of the intrusion of any signs that go on these buildings.
Thank you, councillor Gaffney. I'll turn it back to the manager of planning, Ms. Bridge.
Through the chair, so confirming that, yes, any sign, uh, that it's proposed on the subject property would be required to go through the sign permit process. And would be subject to the, uh, criteria and rules in the sign bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to five point two, modification to draft approved plan of subdivision three one T one eight dash zero zero one A. With respect to the addresses of forty, forty-eight, fifty, sixty, sixty-six and seventy-two, daily app. Revised conditions of draft approval. And once again, I'm going to ask Ms. Bridge to give us a brief overview. And I recognize too that Mr. Bannon is available for questions as well. Ms. Bridge?
Uh, so through the chair, so you have before you this afternoon, um, a report repaired in response to the referral motion at the September thirteenth. Planning and heritage meeting. Uh, the report outlines and evaluates three potential options to address the infilling and heritage area policies of the official plan. And this is in response to a proposed modification to an existing draft approved plan of subdivision, uh, located on Daily Avenue. Uh, so the first option that was explored in that report is to use the site plan control tool to implement those policies. Um, the city's site plan control bylaw, uh, does provide a framework for requiring site plan. For the proposed single detached and semi-detached lots, as the lots are infilling in nature. In addition, um, the delegation of approval for site plan does contemplate site plan approval being referred back to council. Um, in situations where an application is particularly complex or controversial. There are a few limitations to using site, using the site plan control. Tool when it comes to building elevations in urban design. We really can't ask for anything above and beyond the official plan requirements or the requirements of the city's existing urban design guidelines. Which limits somewhat the influence that you can have on building elevations through that process. The second option that was explored was requiring building elevations to address the heritage area policies through the building permit process. The building code is very specific in terms of the required information for a building permit and that they refer to it as applicable law. The official plan policies for heritage area wouldn't be considered applicable law. And what this means is that. If a building permit was applied for and these elevations didn't accompany the application. The city couldn't withhold issuing the permit or refuse the permit. The third option that was explored was to include a clause in the subdivision agreement. And what this clause would require is that future dwellings be constructed with a front porch, a pitched roof and masonry building products. This clause would also include a requirement. That there's a clause included in all offers of purchase and sale advising of these special urban design components. And this is recommended as it's understood that the lots are intended to be sold to builders. This option allows council to specify in greater detail. The urban design elements that would satisfy those infilling and heritage area policies. Staff have recommended this option as a path forward on this application. And have included a condition of draft approval to reflect this requirement. I'd be pleased to answer any questions the committee might have about the options and the recommended approach. And as the chair mentioned, Mr. Jeff Bannon is also on the line should the committee have any questions about the subdivision more broadly speaking.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge. Turning to counselors, questions for Ms. Bridge or Mr. Bannon? And also recognizing that we will have a motion coming forward to hear Ms. Baker as well. Seeing none. But I'm going to move to the next item and that is the motion that Caroline Baker of Baker Planning Group agent for the applicant be heard. Is there a mover for that? Moved by Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counselor Henderson. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. And once again, looking, Ms. Baker, are you available?
I am, yes, if everybody can hear me.
Yes, great.
Good afternoon to the chair and the committee. I will just be brief. Just wanted to add a few quick notes building on Ms. Bridge's presentation. I did want to add that the owners are in agreement with the recommended draft plan condition. And the proposed design characteristics that will be required for any building within the subdivision. The second piece I just wanted to quickly follow up on is Counselor Ingram, I believe at an earlier council meeting unrelated to this application did have some questions about on-street parking. And specifically related to the Warsley lots. I believe it was the understanding that those lots on Warsley would be restricted to two parking spaces. And just wanted to comment in response, part of the reason. That semi-detached building lots are now proposed on Warsley was in response to comments on parking. And that the new design with the larger lots and larger width. Those lots can now accommodate a two-car garage and two parking spaces within the driveway. And a sketch was submitted to city staff to demonstrate how that can be achieved with all of the regulations in the bylaw related to garage width and setbacks and easements. And also just noting that the owner is in agreement with providing a warning clause. To potential purchasers that even though there is the option for four parking spaces on their lot. That there is no on-street parking on Warsley. Certainly the owner is in agreement with that condition. And just wanted to comment on that and here as well to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Questions from counselors? Seeing none. Thank you very much. So there is a staff recommendation or there can be. I'm looking at the council for a motion. With regards to this application. Counselor Gaffney?
I'll move the staff recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And a second for that. Counselor Bunting is seconding discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any? Want to pose and that's carried. Moving forward to item six point one, sign permit, ground sign to be erected erected in place of existing ground sign. And for the address of one sixty six to one ninety five Ontario Street and there is a subcommittee recommendation. Or a staff recommendation, Counselor Vasileakis. You'll move the.
Sorry, the subcommittee recommendation.
Thank you very much, Counsel Vasileakis, seconded by. Counselor Clifford, discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Moving on to six point two, proposed exemption of sign by by law. One five nine dash two zero zero for section. Thirteen point zero and that affects the property of nine two five Ontario Street. And there is a subcommittee recommendation. Counselor Bunty, you're going to move the subcommittee recommendation. Thank you. And that'll be seconded by Counselor Henderson. Thank you, Counselor Henderson, discussion. Seeing none. I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Moving down to item seven. There is a report of the chief building official and. With regards to the deficit of. Of one, one hundred and fifty six thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars and seventy three cents with the building permit review reserve. And there is a motion from the subcommittee. That a one-time transfer from the special projects reserve of ninety thousand nine hundred and ninety eight. Dollars and eighty five cents to the reserve, building reserve be authorized and that the funding of the remaining twenty twenty building inspection admin general. Two five one dash two four zero zero deficit of one. Hundred and fifty six thousand four hundred and fifty six dollars and seventy three cents with the building permit reserve G dash zero seven. Be approved. Moved by Counselor Clifford. Seconder for that, Counselor Burbak, thank you. Discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. And moving down, there's the project updates. And. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Beatty, seconded by Counselor Burbak. Thank you. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will call the infrastructure, transportation and safety committee to order. We have regrets from Counsel Ingram. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, item number three is some committee minutes. They're there for to read at your leisure. Item number four is delegations. We do have delegations added in the addenda today, but we'll take them under item number five. Item number five is reported the deputy clerk and five point one is the climate change planning update. So first I'll call on the deputy clerk, Mr. Bantuck to speak to the staff report and to maybe give a bit of an introduction. To the climate change coordinator's presentation. And then we'll hear, then we'll take a motion to hear from the climate change coordinator and then we'll hear from the public. If that is amenable to everyone because that way the public that are listening. Today would have a little bit of context and background to what the citizens are speaking to. So, Mr. Bantuck, please go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. This report has been prepared to accompany the presentation of the greenhouse gas reduction plan by the shared coordinator. And to provide an update following the last report. And presentation to council in February of this year. So as you'll hear from the climate change coordinator, the plan that's before you today is a comprehensive one and community focused. Through the many goals, actions and strategies provided, this plan, if adopted, will help to serve as a framework. For reaching targets set by council to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Having been deferred from the council meeting in February, the next step for the city in this process is to set an emissions reduction target. The plan notes achievability between ten and thirty percent by twenty thirty. With more actions, resources and financial considerations being required at the higher end of the scale. As displayed in the management report, many municipalities across Ontario have approached the setting of their targets differently. When it comes to the baseline year, the target, the percentage and even the number of targets. The one commonality between them being that they're all working towards a goal to reduce emissions. As seen in some of the comparators, these goals also do not need to remain static. Emissions outputs are typically ever-changing and reduction targets can be similarly dynamic. This means being able to monitor review progress and updating or creating new targets as needed. Once any targets are set, the first step will be to determine where our emissions output sits presently. So that we can know what is remaining to reach the target. And working with the shared climate change coordinator, specific action items will then be reviewed and proposed in order to achieve the target. All this information, including any budgetary impacts, would subsequently be presented to council for approval. The second item in this report for consideration is the corporate adoption of the one planet living principles. This is the last of three initiatives which staff were directed to investigate and report back on earlier this year. Should this be approved, staff would proceed to add the principles to the alignment section of the management report template so that the report writers can easily apply principles to work being undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bantuck? If not, oh, Counsel Burbak?
Thank you. Yes, thanks for the report, Mr. Bantuck. Just to clarify, because there was a little bit of confusion. Between this report, which is the greenhouse gas reduction report and the corporate reduction plan, so. Just amongst members of the public, people were confused as to which was which and what the difference is. So if you could spend some time. Clarifying what those two things are, that would be helpful, I think. Thank you.
So through the chair, the report is. Attended to accompany the plan that was prepared by the coordinator. So the report essentially just outlines an overview of the plan. Intentions of staff. Following the setting of a emissions reduction target and seeking direction from council on that target. As well as that third initiative that staff were asked to report back on. So it was more so of a. Information being provided which accompanies the plan. And then the plan obviously setting the framework for moving forward with our actions.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was I was kind of looking for a difference between the the report that we're going to. Read where we're going to talk about today, the greenhouse gas reduction plan versus a corporate reduction plan. And what those two, because the corporate reduction plan, from what I understand from the report, is still upcoming. It's something that once we set targets, you'll be able to work on. But just maybe the the difference between. How overarching the greenhouse gas reduction plan is for the whole county versus Stratford's own initiatives.
Through the chair, yes, sorry, I apologize. I misunderstood your question there. So, yes, as you mentioned, the plan before you today is more community focused and addresses items that. All area municipalities can undertake. Because the climate change coordinator is a shared position amongst those municipalities. A corporate action plan that could be undertaken as a part of of this plan. Would be more focused on the city identifying corporate emissions outputs and specific action items. That the city could take to reduce its own emissions.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, we do have a motion to that the presentation by Amara Kharthik, climate change coordinator be heard. Moved by Counsel Henderson, seconded by Counsel Ritzma. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Please go ahead. And welcome.
Good afternoon, through the chair. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Amara Kharthik. I am the climate change coordinator. And today I'm going to present the greenhouse gas emission reduction plan for the city of Stratford. So as a brief introduction to start, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and I C L E I Local Governments for Sustainability. Established the Partners for Climate Change Protection, PCP program, which was signed by the city of Stratford in two thousand and nineteen. The aim of the program is so that the PCP members commit to adopting a community greenhouse gas reduction target in line with the government of Kansas target. And to adopt a target that is either similar or more ambitious. The program is based on a five milestone framework that involves completing greenhouse gas inventory and forecast. Setting a greenhouse gas reduction target, developing a local action plan. Implementing that plan and monitoring and reporting the progress and results. Through the PCP platform, Stratford's community missions were compiled and uploaded into the tool, which then assisted in calculating the total emissions from each sector. So this graph shows the total community emissions of Perth County, which includes the city of Stratford and township of St. Mary's. All emissions was calculated off of the baseline year of two thousand and seventeen. The greatest contributor to local emissions is a combination of all transportation. So this includes on-road transportation such as personal vehicles as well as off-road vehicles such as tractors and other agriculturally related vehicles. And this makes up approximately fifty four percent of the total emissions. The second largest contributor in this area is the building sector. This makes up approximately thirty eight percent of the total emissions. Majority of these emissions from this source comes from natural gas, propane and fuel. And the third contributor of emissions is from solid waste. Specifically looking at the city of Stratford. The greatest contributor is a combination of the building sectors. So that would be the purple sections on the graph. Which accounts for forty seven percent, followed by the transportation sector of thirty eight percent. And fourteen percent from solid base. So in two thousand and seventeen, the city of Stratford emitted approximately two hundred and seventy seven thousand tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. From on-road transportation, waste and the building sectors. With this total of emissions, the emissions per person in two thousand and seventeen was equal to approximately eight point nine three tons of carbon dioxide. Which is comparable to about two passenger vehicles driven per year, per person. So looking at this projection with this growth rate and the emissions from two thousand and seventeen. If the increase of emissions is to continue with this scenario. It would be projected to be approximately one million tons of carbon dioxide per year. Which is equivalent to approximately one million of carbon dioxide. So this, to put in terms, is about four billion kilometers driven by an average passenger vehicle in one year. So the next few slides will show the projected emissions under three different scenarios and controls. Focusing on the red line, which establish establishes if the rate of emission was to continue as is normal today. Then, for example, the projected average yearly temperature for Stratford would be around fifteen degrees Celsius. And what that means is with a higher heat temperature could have significant health effects on our community. Similarly, this chart indicates the length and severity of wintertime. So a decrease in frost days means that the growing season in the area will also increase. But what this also means is that there would be an increase in pests and the potential for increased vector borne diseases. Less frost days also will limit the type of plants and animals that can survive in this new climate. Which means that the species that we normally see today may not be able to survive, therefore affecting our ecosystem and our biodiversity. And looking at these two charts. And looking at these two charts, they show the projection of the cooling degree days and the days with maximum temperature at 30 degrees Celsius. And what this means is that it indicates that the amount of air conditioning needed to maintain a comfortable temperature in the warmer months. So an increase in cooling degrees days is indicative of a longer and more intense summer. And this is an important indicator for health and environmental risk. Temperatures above 30 degrees Celsius can increase the risk of heat exhaustion and heat stroke. So looking at the plan, the plan identifies various actions and strategies to move forward on increasing our adaptability and reducing our greenhouse gas emissions within our community. The approach to the greenhouse gas reduction plan is ensure that there are both short and long term planning and programs and initiatives to constantly build and ensure that climate change is included in our future plans, which leads to my next point of mainstreaming climate into practices, plans and decisions. And in order to ensure that this smoothly transitions within our community, it is an inclusive plan that covers the likes of key stakeholders, individuals and the community. So the plan is broken down into actions, targets and goals. To briefly go over the seven sectors that are covered, I will start with government. So through the municipality and county governments, we are capable of effectively engaging the local community on climate change, local action and resiliency projects. The local government can properly engage the community so that they're able to make real change and be part of decision making within their community. This can be done by adopting tools such as a climate lens, such as the Clean Air Partnership, which helps to analyze the relationship between municipal between municipal decisions and climate change. So what this tool does, it creates a possibility and projection of if climate change is considered, what the possible outcomes would be if it was and if it wasn't on the different scenarios. The second sector is the building and land use sector. So a green building standard not only helps to boost the local economy, but also addresses the priorities that have been set through the development of this plan. So this includes air quality, energy efficiency, water quality and solid waste. Through the next sector, business and industry, by being able to start, join on or support a local green business hub. It is known that by implementing sustainable actions into businesses, it helps to improve business, improves the efficiency and reduces the cost overall, creating a circular economy and it gives businesses an opportunity to find support within their their community for sustainability and their carbon footprint. In the transportation sector, it is one of the largest contributors to our local greenhouse gas emissions. There is an opportunity to push the reduction of this sector of emissions through supportive actions and policy implementation. So be it through developing better connectivity and promoting active transportation, installing charging stations, implementing anti-idling laws, promoting the use of green vehicles. It all helps to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. In the waste sector, ultimately, the ideal solution in this scenario is to create local market or moving towards a zero waste community and supporting a transition to circular economy. Through targeting and planning for waste related changes and projects into coming years in each municipality, this plan helps to set targets for waste diversion and waste reduction, which are both crucial in reducing the waste that goes into our landfill. Looking at our natural environment by being able to implement projects that across the region that increase naturalization and sequestration opportunities. Planting and renaturalizing have many co-benefits. It also can be assisted by local schools to encourage a deeper connection to the environment and allow opportunity to teach about biodiversity and land use. The naturalization of spaces is also important as it allows for the natural native biodiversity and ecosystems within our community to return and thrive. And finally, looking at the agriculture sector, this is mainly to ensure that our farming communities have access to funding and resources to implement resiliency projects and projects that reduce runoff and in turn improve our local water quality. So to briefly summarize the goals for each sector, starting with government. So to embed climate consideration into all municipalities and provide educational resources, are building a land use to create greener, more sustainable, accessible and energy efficient neighborhoods. Business and industry to support sustainability and climate actions in local businesses. Transportation to support and plan for future transportation changes, needs and priorities. In the waste sector, to reduce waste going to landfills to become a zero waste community. Natural environment to preserve and improve natural ecosystems and assets. And finally, in the agriculture sector, to support local agriculture resiliency and mitigation processes. So this plan is intended to be a support for the community to lead in climate action and to be led by the municipalities. This implementation strategy will allow the municipalities and the county to be leaders in climate action, while also allowing for shared responsibility of of the implementation. And this can also be achieved through external organizations and partnerships to ensure that there not only is a successful implementation, but also so that we have external resources to ensure that everything is implemented smoothly. By being able to budget and plan for climate action, which would be more accessible through the adoption of a climate lens. And it is important to note that there are different avenues of government funding for green projects that are currently being updated and renewed. And the overall message is through the adoption of this plan, it will showcase how how the communities are all connected and working together to create a healthier and more prosperous future. And this can be achieved by our greenhouse gas reduction plan. Thank you very much. And I will take questions if there are any.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councillor Gaffney, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the things I noticed and and I don't know if this would have made sense when I was looking for something to do with my front lawn this spring. I was trying to decide whether I should just concrete it over or plant new grass. What I ended up doing was planting new grass. Should I have just like one of the things, and I agree 100%. Lawn mowers is a small example, but as an example of 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 our our problems, our environmental problems. Would it have made more sense for me to, and I, when I say concrete it over, I mean like interlocking brick or something? I know it's a small thing, but that's the kind of thing people think about.
Through the chair, if I can respond. So we're not looking by having grass. It doesn't. Sorry, let me start over. So we're not hoping to just, I know one of the action it says to decrease lawn maintenance. But we're not looking for you to completely remove your green space. You can convert that green space into a natural environment, foster biodiversity. But what we mean is by reducing the inputs of pesticides and and fertilizers and things like that. But there are other means which you can naturally help the environment without, I'm sure, yes, lawn mowers are a very small percentage, but it does add to greenhouse gas emissions. But when we say lawn maintenance, we're looking at the additional resources that you put in like fertilizers and pesticides and insecticides. But there are different ways in which you can maintain your lawn.
I will note that the state of California has now has a new law that is banning gas power, gas powered lawn maintenance equipment, and they're going to zero emission equipment. So I think one of the things is a combination of naturalization and and converting your lawn from from monoculture grass to something that's more sustainable. But then also there's some regulatory pieces around better equipment for for emissions. So I think those are all kinds of things that we can discuss moving forward. But it's a good question about what to do with our lawns. Any other questions? Councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just trying to find it. There is a couple of programs. And I know one of them was PACE. And I can't remember what the other one was. It started with I. And in your report, you talk about the cost of some of the different programs and stuff. And I apologize to bigger part. I'm trying to find what I saw, but what one of the things it said, here it is on page 69. The action, it says offer LIC, LIC or PACE financing to assist in deep retrofits. And it says under cost, high cost grants available and and in reading the report, I got the understanding, things like the LIC and PACE would be a loan, a loan program through the city, which makes me think it's it's there'd be some carrying cost, but we eventually get that money back, would we not, through, because it's a loan? It would be financed over time. Is that, is that, am I getting reading that correctly?
So are you specifically talking about LIC, through the chair, sorry? Are you specifically talking about LICs or? Well, I think you're muted. Sorry.
You are correct. Yes, like my understanding was the LIC or the PACE programs were more of a and financing assistance, which mean the quite possibly the city would loan somebody some money to make these retrofits. But it would be a payback, like the eventually they pay it back to us through financing, like long term finance, and maybe not long term, but over time. Or am I reading that incorrectly?
Um, to be honest, I cannot answer that question. I don't know the in-depth details of of these partnerships, but I know they are available. And definitely through the implementation stage, as we look more into funding and different programs that we can implement through the city as well as the county. There will be more in-depth information available to be passed on to council. Right now, these are just the fundings that are available. They're not necessarily the ones that we are saying that will we will pursue in the future, but there are examples that there is funding available.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Henderson and then councillor Clifford.
I was just gonna move the motion and add something to it, or is that?
Um, it's maybe councillor Henderson, if we could hear the public first before we move on to the record, just because, right? Councillor Clifford? And then councillor Bunton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I was gonna ask, is the hope that Stratford, the townships, St. Mary's and County were all accepted like exactly the same, or is it up to each council to decide what they will do?
It is up to each council to decide what they will do. The plan is a comprehensive one, and it's hoped that as you move into the implementation stage, it would be more tailored to each county or township or municipality. Just for the setup of the plan itself, I can't go into each detail per se for each of the seven areas that I'm looking at. That's why the implementation stage is very important, because through that stage, we are able to look at projects, we're able to do surveys and inventories of things that have already been done, be it individual or through the city, and count that towards our emission reduction.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Bunton.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. This may or may not be the right place to to talk about this, but does anybody have any figures with respect to the amount of of household waste that would be ordinarily going into green bins? I think our green bin project has been a success. However, it's my understanding that considerable amounts of such waste, food waste in particular, ends up in our dump. And accordingly, that will generate methane gas and we have to to install very expensive systems in each section so that we can capture the greenhouse of the methane and burn it off. So does anybody have any handle on the weight of materials that end up in our dump? And how much methane gas they produce over the course of a year? I would respectfully suggest that everybody is equal as the as the amount of foodstuffs that are gathered roadside from residential disposal.
Through the chair, I do not have those numbers currently. From when this plan was created, it did start before the green bin program had started. So definitely it is an area that needs to be surveyed and inventory to update the emission numbers. But as of now, I do not, I do not know if anyone else has those numbers within the city.
I do see our director of infrastructure came on. So, Mr. Crinklaugh, do you have an update on that for us?
So Chair, unfortunately, I do not. However, there was a request for staff to bring back a report with such numbers and hopefully we'll have that for early November.
And so I had a question from for Ms. Kharthik. So my understanding would be that the for each individual municipality, you would then go and do an implementation plan based on the target that we set. And that that target would, that target would take into consideration things that have already been implemented. So for example, the green, the implementation of the green bin program, since this plan was written, would actually go towards that target. So we've already moved and a couple of other things like the idling bylaw and some other things that the city has already done. We're already on the path to to meeting whatever target we set. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that is correct. So in the implementation stage, as I said before, there definitely needs to be a thorough survey done to be able to update those numbers and to actually see where we are in terms of the target number.
Much. Are there any other questions or comments? Councillor Ritzma?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your presentation. I know we had a public presentation or a public meeting on this not too long ago. My question is, and I believe it came out in in that public meeting. Can you identify a Canadian municipality that we can hold up as a model of what a good plan for greenhouse gas emissions reduction would be? Is your municipality that you believe, you know, and I know each municipality has its own challenges and whether it's agriculture, whether it's forestry, etc., but is there is there one that you see as as something that we, you know, could look at as a as a model?
Through the chair, definitely. There have been models and other municipalities who have gone through the same PCP program, such as the Washlo region. They have already hit their implementation stage and are well on their way of getting their reductions down as well as hearing county. So yeah, there are examples around, especially ones who have moved further along than we have that have been showing real promising progress in reducing their emissions.
Councillor Burbach.
Thank you. I have a question which may be for more for staff than for Ms. Kharthik, but I'm just looking for a little clarification around, we're talking about an implementation plan. Is that the equivalent of a corporate reduction plan, or is the corporate reduction plan within an implementation plan that's going to be made for the city of Stratford?
Go ahead, Mr. Bantall.
Through the chair, my understanding is that that corporate plan could be a part of the implementation. Through the chair, my understanding is that that corporate plan could be a part of the implementation. Stage, that's something that we would look to. Review and discuss further with the Shared Climate Change Coordinator.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, we have had some citizens that have been waiting very patiently for their turn to speak to this item. So under the agenda, we have a motion to the presentations by the following citizens be heard. We have Mike Sullivan, Jane Marie Mitchell, Bill James Abra on behalf of Climate Momentum, Liza Balkan, Sharon Collingwood, and Herman Grant. Do we have a mover for allowing them to speak, moved by Councilor Ingram, or sorry, Councilor Ritzma, seconded by Councilor Birbaq, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried, so first up is Mr. Sullivan, go ahead when you're ready. Mr. Sullivan, you can go ahead when you're ready. For the chair, we are just working to connect Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, you may need to press star six if you are on the phone. I'm wondering, do we wanna, do we wanna move on to Ms. Mitchell and then come back to Mr. Sullivan, can we do that? Okay, so maybe we can. So Ms. Mitchell, go ahead when you're ready, or when you're connected.
Hi there, I'm ready.
Okay, please go ahead, yeah, we can hear you, please go ahead.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about greenhouse gas reduction. Plan that we have, I appreciate your attention. Could you show my first slide or my slide? Just give you a second or two to look at that.
Okay, we can see it now, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to give you a second to look at it.
Hello?
So Stratford has declared a climate emergency, not an observation, as shown in this slide in an article from nineteen twelve. And we must start to act on it with urgency. The Creating a Healthy Environment Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan, created by our climate coordinators. Quotes the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, in the executive summary, which he didn't mention today. And I quote. The world has to stay below this threshold of one point five degrees Celsius. And lower emissions forty to fifty percent by twenty thirty. Or effects will be long-lasting or irreversible. There is the target we should be setting today. This goal will challenge all of Stratford and Perth County to achieve or exceed. Anything less is not aggressive enough for something that is so threatening to our air. Water and land environments. And ultimately, our health and well-being. Livelihoods in our island home of earth. We need to add to our reduction and follow the federal government's lead. For the ultimate goal of net zero by twenty fifty, which is not stated on the chart or is a motion. Stratford needs to be a leader. And integrate this action, engaging the public and all sectors. Including agricultural, transportation, including the airport. Utilities and all industrial and commercial sectors within their policies and procedures. Stratford needs an ambitious target to achieve net zero before twenty fifty. Stratford should set a target of at least forty percent by twenty thirty and strive to reach that beforehand. Along with its partners and organizations. That should be our target here, as we have observed and studied long enough, and now it's time. For action. The city of Stratford needs to include mitigation measure in all our policies and procedures. To attack the adverse effects of climate change. For example, the planning department can go beyond the provincial building code minimum. And increase demand on all new builds. Towards net zero homes. With solar panels and EV chargers and passive. Building techniques. Even at larger apartment buildings and condos. The ultimate code could be leads, leadership in environment. And environmental design and possibly incentives for using geothermal technology. Commercial and industrial sectors could use rail travel for deliveries rather than trucks to decrease emissions. The target is not just for the corporation of the city of Stratford actions. But collaborative actions, including residents, tourists, organizations. Commercial, industrial, utility and agricultural sectors. Together, we can have a positive effect on climate change. For help to achieve this. We need a full-time climate change coordinator to educate city staff and citizens and other sectors. There will be grants to find and apply for. And monitoring of the actions to report and adjust the living document. To help meet the target. There are connections to be made with other communities like Whistler BC that are successful. To apply this knowledge to our strategies. There should be internal working groups that the coordinator can guide as well. We have no way of knowing what assistance will be available in the future. What technologies may be able to help? And what life in twenty thirty will look like. But we need to work hard to get there with sustainably less CO2 emissions. Corporations are leading the way in offering products and services lowering emissions as requested by clients. I know the city of Stratford has already done things like changing streetlights to LED and the green bin program as well. But many and many other things, but many more changes. Are able to be made. Whether they are a low, medium or high cost attached to them. We really only have twenty-eight. Until twenty fifty to reduce two hundred and seventy-seven thousand tons of CO2 to net zero. A ten percent reduction of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred tons in eight years is not enough to start with. That would leave ninety percent to reduce in twenty years. We have to be energized by a much higher target. Beginning such a journey may seem daunting. But collaborative effort. Will truly make the difference with everyone working together. Humanity's actions, God is here. So all of us need to affect a positive change now. With regard to public engagement, because the public engagement will be an important factor in this outcome. The public should have a better opportunity to have their voice heard about this. The residents should have access and lots of advanced knowledge. Of when decisions will be made and when things are to be brought to council. It is truly impossible to email or write a letter. If one doesn't want to make a delegation. Or to prepare a presentation to be shared with the agenda. If it has to be done by Tuesday, when the agenda isn't available until Thursday of the same week. Staff and others can give reports to be included with the agenda. So people have a chance to read. It before the meeting, but the public are like second-class citizens, not having advanced knowledge to prepare. A well-thought-out response to something like creating a healthy environment in just a few days. And have it be in the agenda for information for all. And if the public has not had much time to read the document, creating a healthy environment. Included in the agenda, I would like to make a motion. That we defer decision to reduce greenhouse gas emission reduction. To twenty thirty until the next council meeting. That will allow for more public engagement, residents will be owning the target as well. I would also like to make another motion that we include a reduction. Of greenhouse gas emissions to net zero by twenty fifty, as I feel it's missing. Thank you very much, are there any questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, are there any questions? Uh, seeing none?
I was gonna. Sorry, I was gonna make a comment to Councilor Gaffney, that he could make a combination of the squares. Of cement with grass or herbs coming through it, so that you don't have. Plain stone where the water will flow and you will have some water going down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So so now we'll try to go back to, I saw, hello, Mr. Is that Mr. Sullivan?
That is.
Okay.
And I'm now talking through Zoom rather than my phone, I hope that's okay.
That is fine, we can hear you, go ahead, and I forgot to mention, we do have a number of people today, I will try, I will keep everyone to ten minutes, I will give you the nine-minute mark, okay?
Thank you very much, I hope not to be that long. First, thank you very much, Madam Chair, thank you to the council for agreeing to hear me. On on the matter of consultation, Stratford isn't very good at it. The procedure bylaw requires citizens who wish to have their comments included on the agenda with any report. Have to notify the clerk before the report is released. And that's a catch-22 if ever there was one. In the instant case, the city's own Energy and Environment Committee met on the same day the report was released. But were not given a copy to study at the meeting. We scrambled at the end of the meeting to try and make recommendations based on a half-hour discussion after discovering it was available. In addition, although this is perhaps one of the most important issues facing the planet, the country in Stratford. There was no attempt by the city to publicize the existence of the report or the fact that it would be discussed here today. On the contents of the report itself, in the few hours I've had to study it over the holiday weekend, I found the report by the two climate change coordinators. To be extremely well-written and thorough. It does not make specific recommendations as to the appropriate actions to take, but rather leaves that to council to choose from many in the report. The staff recommendations attached to the report do not choose specific actions. But rather ask council to choose from three targets, ten, twenty or thirty percent reductions by twenty thirty. The base chosen is twenty seventeen, based on the February report of the former climate change coordinator of two hundred and. Seventy-seven thousand tons as the twenty seventeen base emissions in Stratford. The federal government has now set two thousand and five as the base for reductions of forty to forty-five percent by twenty thirty. Stratford's base in two thousand and five was a little over three hundred and twenty thousand tons. Based on the two thousand and eight Hill Report. However, that report included industrial emissions. Which the February twenty twenty-one report did not. So trying to base any decision on twenty seventeen is comparing apples to oranges as the two reports counted different things. In the thirteen years since the Hill Report, the city has grown in terms of buildings, in terms of population and vehicles. I asked if the city took any of the actions in the Hill Report, but was only able to ascertain the burning of methane gas in the landfill. As a positive change, and of course, since. Then, there has also been the introduction of a green bin program and the anti-idling bylaw change. But quantifying the progress so far to the thirty percent goal is not possible based on the data, my own estimation. Is that it is not likely a lot of progress and given growth. We may very well have increased emissions in Stratford in those thirteen years. Given the federal government's decision to speed up its own targets, setting forty to forty-five percent as Canada's goal by twenty thirty. I would respectfully urge the city to set as high a target as possible. Thirty percent may be too low. It is certainly a minimum. And ten or twenty do not give the matter the seriousness it deserves. Stratford's emissions are made up of thirty-nine percent from vehicles, fourteen percent from waste. And forty-seven percent from heating and cooling buildings. Even if all the vehicles in the city were to be electric by twenty thirty, we would not reach the forty percent target. Clearly, a significant number of buildings must move away from fossil fuels to meet any target. And growth without forcing new builds to be carbon neutral will exacerbate the problem. The fact that the city owns the local electric utility. Which will have to supply electricity to those who switch from fossil fuels. Put Stratford in a great position to manage conversions to electric heat. And of course, if Stratford has a plan. Senior levels of government will be better able to shower the city with money and incentives to do this. Those of you who attended the excellent webinar put on by Eric Miller, an economist at York University, will recall the discussion of carbon budgets. Perhaps that is how this city could deal with the climate emergency by setting budgets. For greenhouse gas emissions and sticking to them, just like a financial budget. Finally, the report recommends at least one full-time position be put in place. For continuing to advise and instruct council and staff on the climate emergency and the actions to take. It was also recommended that all council decisions be taken through a climate lens. With that new staff person being able to help. I couldn't help but notice that the planning department. For example, did not once refer to emissions or climate. In recommending the approval of an apartment building on Ontario Street. And as unless I missed it, there was no discussion of the climate emergency in any of the applications that the planning. Committee discussed today. Council should know how much any development will add to the problem. And therefore, if you accept a carbon budget, change the figures in the carbon budget. I would urge council to act on those recommendations and hire at least one full-time person. For helping council and staff on the climate emergency. I would also urge council to act on the recommendation to review all decisions. Through a climate lens, including decisions on the basis of planning. These are, this is a great report. Put together in not a lot of time, and I want to commend the individuals who put this report together. And they've given council lots to think about. I would urge council, if it must decide today. At this here, at this committee meeting. To pick a number, ten, twenty or thirty. Be bold, pick thirty-five, pick forty, pick something that shows you you mean it. And then set about setting a budget. So that you can actually. Achieve the goals you set. Setting a target without actually meeting it is the hallmark of the federal government in the liberal years and the conservative years. There were, there was never a target they couldn't exceed. So let's, let's try, at least in the city of Stratford, to set a target and then actually meet it. The residents of the city are actually wanting this. And I think they just need some leadership, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Seeing none, we'll move on now to Bill James Abra on behalf of Climate Momentum. Go ahead when you're. When you're brought in.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone, or at least it was good afternoon when I wrote these notes, I think we've shaded into the evening at this point. My name is Bill James Abra, I am part. I am part of the Leadership Group for Climate Momentum. And I'm speaking on their behalf this afternoon. And Climate Momentum is a Stratford and Perth County-based climate action group that promotes meaningful climate action, both at the community level and at the individual level. And this afternoon, I'd like to address that community-led climate action and the potential for the city to lead in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. The first and most basic comment I'd like to make with regards to the staff recommendation for the greenhouse gas reduction plan, the first and most basic comment I'd like to make is to urge you to adopt it. We at Climate Momentum are concerned to see the city move towards concrete, measurable action on addressing greenhouse gas emissions. And adopting the plan is a next necessary step toward developing and implementing an action plan. So we urge you simply to adopt it. We're behind other cities on this. Smaller cities, larger cities, cities the same size as Stratford, and there's no good reason for it. It goes back to Counselor Ritzman's question earlier about models that we can point to. And I'd be happy to provide some of those for you. So the first basic ask is that we have this committee, that we have of this committee, is that you accept the staff's recommendation and adopt the greenhouse reduction plan. And the second ask we'd have of the committee echoes what you've heard from other citizens tonight. And that is that we set bolder targets, that bolder targets than the staff have suggested to you. And I can, I can appreciate that staff may want to provide this committee, may be obliged, for all I know, to provide this committee with a range of options, as they've done today with the 10, 20, and 30%. But this is going to sound harsh, but there's no other way to put it. 10% is literally doing nothing. And 20 isn't much better. Let me explain. Others have made this point, and it bears repeating. The city could very well be able to accomplish a 10% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by doing nothing, but standing by while private car owners shift from gas-powered to hybrid and all-electric cars. The market forces that will move people away from gas-powered cars may be enough to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 10%. The city could do nothing, or next to nothing, and certainly not lead in the community on greenhouse gas emissions. And 20 isn't much better. So as others have said, I would urge you strongly to consider 30% as your minimum, as your starting point, and not as your endpoint. Cities to the east of us, Kitchener, Cambridge, Waterloo, the four townships of Woolwich, Wellesley, Wilmot, North Humphreys, they've all committed to 50% by 2030. Ottawa's committed to 50% by 2030. And as Mike was just discussing, the federal government has committed to 40 to 45%. Surely, we can do much better than 30. So we're looking for Stratford to set 30 as a minimum target. So that's our second request of this committee. First, to adopt the report. Second, that you look at setting bolder reduction targets. And thirdly, the request we'd have of this committee and of council is hire the staff. Hire the staff. Take our experience of this past year as an illustration of how important that is. Our understanding is, in Climate Momentum, that Rebecca Garlick had this report ready for you in October of 2020. The report that's in front of you today was essentially ready to present one full year ago. But between Rebecca's leaving, because her contract wasn't renewed in a timely fashion, and Amara finally being able to present to you today, we've lost a year. You may know this expression, wisdom is gained from experience, and experience is often gained from making mistakes. And we think the wisdom to be gained from losing this last year is you cannot move forward on this without the staff to make it happen. So our third request is that staff be hired. And I'd encourage you to think of leading other municipalities in this county to, to navigate that hiring process among seven municipalities would be like herding cats. I would strongly urge Stratford to take a leadership role in the county in hiring. So adopt the report. Look for more aspirational goals. Hire the staff to make it happen. And finally, engage your community. The community is ready to, for you to lead on this. In the past few days of this long weekend, I've, I've seen email conversations and e-newsletters and online conversations. All of them, I've seen among the volunteers of Climate Momentum, the leadership of Get Concerned Stratford, among the Stratford Rotary Club, among your own E and E committee. All of them are looking to the city and ready for the city to take action on this. The city is ready for you to lead. So in conclusion, please, adopt the report, set bolder targets, hire the staff, and then we can all get to work on this. And we can all get to work on this together. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to the next presenter, and it's Liza Balkan. Ms. Balkan, go ahead.
Hello. Thank you, Madam Chair and council, for allowing me to speak on this. I won't take much time. I would only be reiterating what Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Mitchell, and Mr. James Abrah have already said, and the importance of that. I think that 10%, if we're looking at 10, 20, and 30, anything less than 30% is, is basically doing nothing. And, you know, as a citizen in Stratford, a citizen of Stratford, and the beauty of Stratford, it's easy to forget in our community, because of the beauty of Stratford, and because of things like the Hope Is Growing Garden, and the magnificence of that, that we are in a situation where action must be taken now. And it's easy to forget because it is so overwhelming. I even look at the faces on the screen and the faces of my friends and this community, and how we blur, how our visions blur because it is such an overwhelming journey ahead. And so I would encourage the numbers be no less than 30, and net zero by 2050. I also agree that it may make sense to defer the decision about the percentage until the next meeting, when more community members, when the city can actually have read this extraordinary document, this plan, and speak to it in larger numbers. It's too important. You know, when I looked at the, the plan itself, it says the plan is intended to be a starting point in local climate action. It's a living document, and it will require collaborative efforts to see successful implementation and be seen as a guide. So I think that is its guidepost for all of us. And so I would encourage, I would encourage the collaboration ahead with this community. I think that's all. Oh, the other piece that I would say is because of, because we are in a climate emergency. And again, it's easy for us to forget that because we want to forget it, but we cannot forget it. There should be a full-time climate change coordinator. It's too important for our children, for your children, for your grandchildren, for their grandchildren, and for this community. And we're seeing the change both locally, provincially, Lord knows, nationally, most definitely, and globally. So thank you for your consideration and for giving me a space to speak to this as a city dweller and as someone who loves this, loves Stratford, and who loves our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Balkan? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next person, and that's Sharon Collingwood. Ms. Collingwood, go ahead when you're, when you're on.
Hello. Are you there?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, good. So many talented people have spoken before me that I have cut out some things from what I wanted to say. So I hope it still makes sense. But what I wanted to talk about is a little bit different. I want to talk about just your average citizen's point of view on this issue. And seeing as I'm an average citizen, I thought I'd be the one to do it. I have two points to make. And I can provide references for my examples if council wishes to see them. My first point is that Stratford must respond forcibly, forcefully, to the climate emergency. This spring, a heat dome settled on British Columbia, and a billion sea creatures cooked to death along the shores of the lower mainland. Over 800 people died because of the heat, and wildfire completely wiped out the town of Litton. While preparing my deputation today, I wondered what councillors thought when they heard that news. Did you become fearful that something like that could happen in southwestern Ontario? Or did you think that British Columbia is very far away, and what happened there is not really connected to us? I think that most of us are somewhere in the middle of those two positions. And it's really the central question for all of us about climate change. Can we really understand it in terms of our own day-to-day life? It is so natural to want to say, no, this isn't happening. We learned that the coral reefs are going to disappear, but very few of us have seen a coral reef. We learned this fall that there's a very real possibility that the salmon will no longer run in British Columbia. But we don't really connect that to the possible effect of radically increased drought or flooding on local crops, and to what that would do to our children's future. Some of us don't even listen because we don't want to know. It's just too horrible. However, fewer and fewer of us are sleepwalking through the climate emergency. We want to know what's going on. In April of this year, the federal government revised its climate reduction goals for 2030 to between 40 and 45% below 2005 levels. The United States, at the same time, proposed a 50 to 52% reduction for the same time period. And the United Kingdom vowed to restrict emissions by 78% by 2035, compared to 1990. On August 9th, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change Report declared a code red for humanity, demonstrating that climate change was widespread, rapid, and intensifying. That report stated that the world has to lower emissions by 40 to 50% from 2010 levels. Now, as anyone who has bought a used car can tell you, the devil is in the numbers. These goals are very difficult to compare. And when it comes to the numbers at both an international and a local level, confusion abounds. Look at the comparison between cities in this committee's agenda. Examples of emissions targets range from 5% to 100% and are compared to dates between 2011 to 2017. Misrepresentations occur when no attempt is made to make fair comparisons. The Climate Coordinator's report should include a standardization of climate goals so the public, regular people, can understand them. What is the difference between 40% from 2005 and 40% from 2010? 2010, whatever. What emissions are measured? How do we really compare with other cities? If we compare apples to apples, I believe the choices before the committee today will appear completely inadequate. A lack of standardization also means that the citizens of Stratford have been given no way to assess what the outcome of the vote will mean. The Climate Coordinator's report does not reflect the federal government's April revision, reporting the target as 30% from 2005, not, as I said above, from 40 to 45% for the same period. And that's a big difference. Which, which date was used to inform the announced choices for this committee? Those choices are 10, 20, and 30%, with a baseline of 2017. The federal government is becoming more and more concerned about the effects of climate change, and this should be reflected in this committee's deliberations. In short, I believe that more clarity is needed for an informed vote, and therefore, the committee should delay. But if you must vote today, then I encourage you to choose the highest possible goal, and failing that, to choose the 30% goal suggested in the Climate Coordinator's report. My second point is that we must act together. The committee has received the Climate Coordinator's report, which speaks to Stratford's decision to focus initially on climate change mitigation. This is our first step, and it's critically important that we not only make a decision on a strong response to the climate emergency, but also that the decision be participated in by citizens of Stratford. Many of the people of our city over this holiday weekend did not become aware that this decision is being made today. They will have no input in this committee's deliberations. Other steeppeakers today have gone into some detail about the logistics of the committee vote. The Climate Coordinator's report was presented Thursday, two days after the deadline for presenting material to be shown in this committee meeting. The report was not given to the Energy and Environment Committee, thus preventing any input from that group. Thanks to one member of Energy and Environment, who did manage to procure a copy, the committee was at least able to read it together on Thursday. And that is a sad thing to watch. Members of the committee so devoted to protecting our environment, desperately scrambling to understand an 80-page report in the space of a meeting, knowing there will be a vote in four days' time. This is a pattern that must be stopped because it's anti-democratic. Now, I know that democracy is messy, and it's noisy, and it produces work for council. I know tempers get out of hand and voices are raised. But I would ask you to consider something else about democracy. When people are shut out of the decision-making process, a few, as we see today, will come to the meetings and raise our voices. The vast majority, however, will merely say, you can't beat City Hall, and return to their own concerns. This is bad at any time. But during a climate emergency, when we need heads, hearts, and hands, when we all have to pitch in for change, it's a disaster. More voices means more ideas, different perspectives, different skills. People who are listened to are more willing to act. This problem is so big and so immediate that we will need everyone. Over the past several weeks, the city of Stratford has presented a series of information meetings on good governance. These meetings are an admission by the city that we have a problem, and they are welcomed. Working for inclusivity and democracy in our city is a benefit in itself. But we must also remember that an involved citizenry is one that will actively participate in climate mitigation. When citizens believe they will not be listened to, they will not listen. When citizens are cynical about their ability to participate, they will not act. Good governance, then, is an environmental necessity. This is why I believe a delay is necessary to inform citizens. Because if we can do this, if we can do this, we can, we can do it if we can do it together. And I want to thank you for listening and being so patient.
Thank you. I, I did want to point out that to a number of people that this is committee, that what this group does is make a recommendation to council. So it is, it is, it is a decision, but it is not a final decision. And that, and typically, things will go through subcommittee, and then committee, and then council. This report, we thought, was important enough to come directly to committee, rather than going through the subcommittee process, which only includes part of council. And also because these meetings tend to be more publicly available. And so there is still plenty of opportunity between whatever decision, whatever recommendation is made by committee today to have input before this comes to council for a final decision. This is just for everyone on the line. And I also would like, if possible, and I realize that there was a different person involved in the community outreach, if, if the climate change coordinator could quickly speak to the amount of community engagement that went into creation of the plan to begin with. Because this plan did involve community outreach and feedback. If, even if she could just take a moment to, to talk a little bit about that.
Sir, the chair.
Through the chair. Yes, so the previous climate change coordinator, Rebecca Garlic. There was a little bit of a damper on her opportunities because of COVID. But she did try her best to engage. I know it was through the Rotary Club. She did a presentation, Climate Momentum. She had several meetings. And she really did try her best to get the word out. In December 2020, she did do a survey. It was a community survey that was shared through Perth County, city of Stratford, and St. Mary's to ensure that it was as inclusive as possible when she was creating the plan. And some of those numbers are included, some of those responses are included in the plan. So I can't attest to the direct difficulties that she had. But I know it has been discussed before that due to COVID and the situation of not being able to actually engage in person with the community. I know she did have meetings set up, but she did try her best to find other alternatives to make sure that she was engaging everyone.
And if I may, on a follow-up to that, if this plan is approved and your work continues, when we get into the implementation plan for Stratford, my assumption would be that that would involve a fair amount of community outreach and community participation in shaping that implementation plan and the details of it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Just, I just want everybody who's watching to know that this isn't the last time we're going to be discussing this. Counselor Burbach, did you have a comment or question before? I see if we have our last speaker.
That was just a comment. There were 456 responses who took the fairly thorough survey. So there was a good community response and input to the creation of this plan, I think.
Thank you. I didn't have those numbers handy. I do believe we have one more speaker, but I'm not sure if Carmen Grant is available. I'll look to the city clerk.
Through the chair, I do not see Carmen Grant on the line.
Okay, then. So moving on, we do have another addenda item, which is a motion that the correspondence from Manford here in response to the climate change planning update be received for information. Moved by Counselor Burbach, seconded by Counselor Henderson, all in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. And now we can go back to the main part of the committee agenda, which is looking for a recommendation. I have Counselor Burbach, and then Counselor Henderson, and then Counselor Clifford. Counselor Burbach, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to move the staff recommendation that the greenhouse gas reduction plan be adopted and that the city of Stratford adopt the One Planet Living Principles and that council, I guess, provides, well, yeah, not provides directions. I think we should adopt a 30% reduction by 2030 and net zero by 2050. And I would also like to add that we would annually review these reduction targets so that we might look to update and set them as we get more information. Some of the reasons that I'm choosing the 30%, first of all, we've heard from a lot of citizens that that is the way they would like to go. Including the 456 responses, the vast majority of them wanted to see a 30% greenhouse gas reduction. The E&amp;E Committee gave a recommendation back in February for 30% reduction as well. So the other very strong encouragement is that in the staff report by Mr. Bantock, he does say that 30% is attainable. So I think that we do need a goal that is both aspirational and attainable. And I do believe that 30% is that goal, initially speaking. And then as we go along, we can possibly update it based on the numbers that we collect. I would also like to make a separate motion after we deal with this one. Thank you.
So do I have a second or for that motion? I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Henderson is seconding that, but I will open it up now for discussion. Counselor Henderson, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, because I wanted. I also wanted to add that in order for us to do this, that we need to hire a climate change coordinator. Because right now, I believe the contract runs out in December. So we don't want to end up with the same issue we had last time, where we got ready to extend the contract and then the person found another job. And so I think we need to do this quite quickly because it runs out in December. So we need to add this to part of our motion that we hire and that the county of Perth and St. Mary's will share. We'll obviously have to reach out to them and ask them if they've got it in their budget. I don't know if it's in our budget because we haven't got the stuff yet, so.
So if I may, I do believe Counselor Burbach, that was her additional motion afterwards, if she's.
My intention was to do a second motion where we're going to discuss an implementation plan along with having a carbon budget and a climate coordinator for the city of Stratford specifically.
I'll pull that out right now, then.
So Counselor Clifford, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was wondering, when I think of what we had with the glass plant that we talked about, have we talked to Invest Stratford what the ramifications are going to be in the type of industry that we will allow into this city of Stratford? So I don't know. I guess I would ask our staff or our coordinator, our climate coordinator, if they have talked to Invest Stratford what the ramifications are.
So is your question whether, so just for clarity, whether Invest Stratford and our economic development, whether some of the climate plan and the targets would be rolled into what the work that they would be doing as well? Is that kind of what you have?
And if there's been any dialogue, like pre-dialog, yes, exactly.
Okay, I think the city clerk had, yeah, came on.
Through the chair, just also looking to the deputy clerk, just to clarify if I am incorrect on this. But we did initially reach out to Invest Stratford back in February when we presented the list of initiatives to get a sense of what it would mean for industrial development and economic development in the city. They did raise a number of points and potential issues that we would need to investigate further. So it's likely that reviewing economic development in industrial land specifically would likely be a further layer to the climate change planning in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions before I call the question on the motion that we have? Seeing none, and for clarity, Mr. Fo, can you read back the motion just so everyone has it clear?
Also through the chair, it's my understanding that the motion, which was moved by Counselor Burbach and seconded by Counselor Henderson, is that the greenhouse gas reduction plan be adopted, that the city of Stratford adopt the One Planet Living Principles, and that the city of Stratford adopt a 30% reduction target by 2030 and a net zero reduction target by 2050. Further, that annual review of the reduction targets be undertaken.
Thank you. I just had a question around, so question around, if we adopt this plan and within the plan is to go ahead with an implementation plan and to hire a climate change coordinator, like, I think that's part of the plan, would we need? And if we were to pass this, then does that make any subsequent discussion moot? Or do we still need to go forward with that?
So through the chair, it's my understanding we would require additional direction. The addition of additional staff would be subject to budget approval as well. However, motions could be made to refer consideration to the budget, and then it would be included as part of that discussion. But if my understanding, additional information will be forthcoming about an implementation plan, that process, along with information about the corporate climate plan. That's been kind of discussed a few times. Just also looking to the deputy clerk, just to add anything that I may have missed.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted clarity on what we needed to discuss afterwards. So we have that clear, all in favor of that motion? Opposed if any? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. So now I will look to Counselor Burbach for any additional motion, bearing in mind that an implementation plan is part and parcel of what we just approved now.
Okay, thank you. So that means that I don't need to make a motion that we proceed with the implementation plan, or would that be useful?
Go ahead, Mr. Bantock.
Through the chair, any direction provided by council would be helpful. It's the intent of staff to go away with the target now and work to provide more information and start to work through some of those stages that are in the plan. But any direction from council, especially anything that council wishes to see that may have budgetary impacts, would be useful to be provided at this time.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that staff create an implementation plan for climate change. I'm trying to phrase it properly. There's a lot of terms flying around. But that staff would make a climate change implementation action plan and that included in that plan would be items coming from the greenhouse gas reduction plan, including green development standards. And the reason that I'm including that in the motion is because we did have a motion that came through council already to ask for the green development standards. We talked about it at a budget meeting, and we've referred it to this plan. So I want to make sure that that gets in there. And the other piece of the motion would be that we hire a climate change coordinator for the city of Stratford to oversee the plan.
So is that a referral to staff to come back with an implementation plan and a referral to the budget process for the position? Would that be, I think that would be more correct?
If that's, yeah, if that's the way it would work better, that's great.
I'm just wanting, Counselor Henderson is shaking her head, so maybe I'll let her jump in here.
Well, the contract's done in December and budget is for next year. We need to do something now on hiring somebody. Because this person's going to be looking for another job. In the meantime, if they think their contract's running because of December. And I don't know what was included in next year's budget, if it's being offered to extend it. If nothing else, could we maybe even extend it till after the budget being, the contract, or something that.
So I do have, so just in my, it is a little difficult to approve something without knowing what that something is. So I'm wondering whether, so if we have a, refer it back to staff to come back to us with the options of how this position could look? Because it also would involve a conversation with this all seven municipalities and some things like that. So I don't know whether we can be making a decision on that tonight without getting more information back from staff. So I'm wondering if, that's just, I'm a little concerned about not knowing exactly what it is that we're deciding without getting more feedback. Counselor Ritzma, you had.
Yeah, and thank you. Through the chair, I agree 100%. I think it has to be referred back to staff because there's a partnership that is in place right now. And through the staff taking that back and having some dialogue with the partnership and bringing it back to council, I believe, would be the best moving forward. So certainly, I would second that referral by Counselor Burbach, back to staff.
Although, Counselor Burbach, was it a referral that you were looking at for?
I could change it to that, yes. Well, I made a motion for the implementation plan to be, to move forward. So that was one motion. And then I suppose we could do a referral to look at the staff positions. And I wanted to also clarify that there's kind of two positions that I see happening. One is the climate change coordinator for the county and for all the municipalities together, which this greenhouse gas plan is sort of the overarching guide for that person. I would also like to see the city of Stratford have our own dedicated staff. If it's not a full-time position, at least a part of a position, so that there is somebody who is focusing on it within the city and that will be able to help move forward with the plan and make sure that it doesn't get lost.
So if I may, perhaps the deputy clerk could come on? Because my understanding was that this shared climate change coordinator position did have as part of it creation of implementation plans for each of the different municipalities within the mandate of that job. And I'm just wondering what the timelines for that look like and whether there was time for staff to come back with something around the extension of this position or what other funding might be available through FCM for it? Because I think that's another thing we haven't discussed.
So through the chair, I don't have that information available right now. But I do know that we would look to engage the other partners in that conversation, excuse me, to review what an extension would look like. The implement, or the plan itself, while completed by the shared coordinator, the positions in the plan are identified specifically for each municipality, just to provide clarification on that.
So what we have, I'm looking around this. We have a referral to staff to come back with an implementation plan is one. We have a referral back to staff to contact the partner municipalities on a potential extension of this position. And what we would probably have then is a referral to budget for a position or part-time position that is more not about creation of the implementation plan, but more about implementing all the different strategies. So that is what we have. If that was moved, was there, Counselor Henderson, were you seconding that? I don't know, Counselor Ritzma, I believe, was seconding that. Any other discussion or clarification on that piece? Okay, Madam Clerk, do you have, is it fairly straight for you?
The chair, yes.
Perfect, thank you. So all in favor? Opposed if any? And that's unanimous. Again, thank you very much, everyone, for a very fulsome discussion. And thank you for all of the citizens who have participated. And just as a reminder, this will come back to council for another kick at the can. So if there are people out there who would like to get in touch with us, please do. So moving on now, because we have a lot more on this committee agenda. We do have item 5.2, which is traffic and parking bylaw amendments. And we do have a subcommittee recommendation on that. If anyone has any questions, but we also have just the recommendation. So Counselor Burbach, are you moving the subcommittee?
I'll move this, the subcommittee recommendation.
Seconded by Counselor Bunting, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Then item number 5.3 is the Cooper Law Free Permit Program. Sorry, my internet is having issues with my other screen, so it's going to be a little glitchy. I think we were on one item too long. So we do have a subcommittee recommendation that the traffic and parking bylaw be amended to include 30 72-hour permit parking spots in downtown residents and that the clerk be directed to bring forward a bylaw to amend the traffic and parking bylaw to give effect to the proposed changes contained in the report. So we do have a subcommittee recommendation moved by Counselor Burbach, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Counselor Burbach, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just, I thought that at subcommittee, we had made a recommendation. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just, I thought that at subcommittee, we had made a recommendation to go back and look at some different options for that permit. So I, and I don't see, maybe because I'm using don't see this, the recommendation, subcommittee one?
It's a second one. There is a second recommendation there for it. So I would move to that one next. So the first subcommittee recommendation is about the Cooper Lot. And then we have a second one after that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a mover and a seconder for those. Counsel Clifford, did you have a question or comment?
I'm not sure if it's at the right place, but I brought this up for a long time. I think if we're going to have people parking there, or parking overnight, or parking during the day. I think we should have a cost for parking, because that parking lot, we, we remove snow, we do other things, so I don't know if council will ever agree to it, but just a quick story. I was up in Collingwood on Sunday, and I just parked down by the water. It was a $10 parking per hour. So what we do in Stratford here, when we talk about the pressures and the number of people we want to hire, like we just talked about climate, a climate coordinator and all these other things. For us not to charge for parking, in my mind, is a crime all over the city of Stratford. You go up to Garbage now and you park there, they charge to. And if you don't, and also if you, the other thing that they've done in these places, if you don't pay for parking, the parking fine is, in my opinion, astronomical. Anyway, so I think it was talked about possibly about a charge for parking in the park, in, in the Cooper Lot. I, and I think that is something we should institute, quite frankly.
So Counsel Gaffney, I had you next.
Yeah, thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification for Counsel Clifford, that next motion that we're going to deal with next, I think that's where that's that's going to be part of that review, because that's what I brought up at subcommittee is, we should be looking at that. So that's going to be part of that upcoming review. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I was going to say the same thing. So, so we do have the, the first recommendation. So any other comments on that one? If not, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. And then we do have another subcommittee recommendation, was that a monthly permit program for the Cooper or Downey parking lots be referred to staff for review? And that was, that there was a fair amount of discussion at subcommittee about that. Counselor Henderson, are you moving that? Yep, seconded by Counsel Burbak. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. So then we have item number six, which is reported the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services, and we had a series of presentations on speeding and parking issues. So the first one is 6.1, which is Milton Street and Nile Street Always Stop Request. And we had a couple, a couple of subcommittee recommendations from that. So the first subcommittee recommendation was that the report of the Milton Street Nile Street Always Stop Request be received for information. So moved by Counsel Bunting, seconded by Counsel Gaffney. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. And then the second subcommittee recommendation was that staff be requested to review the reduction of the 50 kilometer an hour speed limit to, to, to 40 kilometers an hour on local streets and to bring a report back to subcommittee. And so that was, there was a bit of discussion at subcommittee around this, moved by Counsel Burbak. Is there a seconder for that? Seconded by Counsel Clifford. Any discussion, Counsel Henderson?
I thought we already did this.
So we had, we had discussed this and there was a motion a couple of years ago. But there were a number of municipalities that were doing pilot projects and looking at it further. And so the decision at the time was to wait and see what came back from those pilots. But now there's, there is, and seems to be an appetite on council to relook at some of our local roads and the speeding and the safety issues that have come through. And it's sort of timely as well, because I think the transportation master plan is about to be started. And it includes a vision zero focus as well. So it seems that the stars seem to be aligning to look at this again and to have staff do a little bit more work on that. I have Counsel Clifford, Counsel Bunting.
Can I just finish my follow-up there?
Yeah, sure.
So then part of that recommendation will be that cities that have done these pilots, we're going to get information back from them.
Exactly, that was one of, one of the things that we're discussing. So I believe I had Counsel Clifford, Bunting, Burbak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, when it came up before, I was against it, but quite frankly, I've been getting a lot of calls about speeding in the city. And I don't know, quite frankly, I mean, obviously, it's a police thing too, but you know, when you just drive around, like, I, I think there's a lot, I don't know, it's because of COVID or what, but there seems to be a lot more speeding. And I think we have to address it. I'm not sure it's the right way, but I think we have to do something. So I support this at this time.
And I was just going to add that when we were discussing this 40 kilometer, this change to 40 kilometers an hour, there was an enforcement and education piece to it. And an acknowledgement that it isn't enough just to change, that it requires some built environment pieces, some infrastructure pieces, education and enforcement. So there was discussion around that and when it was referred back to staff. Counselor Bunting, go ahead.
There you go. Sorry about that. Through you, Madam Chair. With respect to the, the speeding thing, it's only as good, you can pick a number, but it'll, it'll rely on enforcement for sure. But I think we also need to look at in combination with infrastructure, as you said, traffic calming. Other cities do it. I see it all the time in other cities and other towns. Traffic calming is, is an additional thing that we have to have a good, hard look at. So, but yep, I, I would agree with the, the recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, a lot of my comments were already covered, but there, there is already evidence back from other municipalities that it's effective. So, but we will get more information from staff about that. And then it, this, this type of thing has been done all over the world and they've been doing it for years and very successfully. So I'm excited to see this moving forward.
Any other comments or questions on that? It has been moved and seconded? Not all in favor? Opposed if any? When opposed, thank you very much, everyone. Next item is Walnut Street Safety Concerns. And there was some correspondence around the safety along Walnut Street, again with speeding. So that 40 kilometer may help with that, but then there was also an infrastructure piece to that one. Sorry, and there was, there was a subcommittee recommendation, the infrastructure piece being that there's no sidewalk there, even though that there, 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 there are a number of city recreational facilities in the area that said require children walking. So Counsel Henderson and Counsel Burbak?
Yes, it says to add it to the list of sidewalks. Isn't that already in our bike and master transportation plan that it needs to be done? That it's a connecting lane that's missing?
Mr. Kirkwall, go, go ahead.
Sorry, so Chair, I, I unfortunately don't have that information on hand. However, we do have an ongoing list of areas that have absent sidewalks throughout the city. And it's noted in that, that list. The order of priority typically, though, is collector and art dealer roads first. That's the priorities set by council. And then we look to locals when we have button.
Okay, so Counsel Burbak?
I was going to make the subcommittee recommendation. Or move that, sorry.
Do I have a second for that? Counsel Gaffney? Any other comments or questions? All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. Sorry, my computer's frozen again. We do have, next is the report from the, the from the Manager of Environmental Services. We have item 7.1, which is a fluoride action plan update and a subcommittee recommendation to the report entitled 2021 Fluoride Action Plan Update Be Received For Information. It is available online for anybody to look at afterwards. But do we have any questions? Or a mover for the subcommittee recommendation? Moved by Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counsel Bunting. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. And the next item is the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report. And again, the subcommittee recommendation was that the report entitled 2021 Sorry, that the Upper Thames River Conservation Authority Risk Management Services Progress Report for 2021 be received for information. Moved by Counsel Ritzma, seconded by Counsel Henderson. Any comments or questions? I will note the 20, the, the COVID did make it an unusual year for them, and there were some alternatives used. But other than they did meet all of their requirements for us. So the next item was the fireworks alternatives, and we had a couple.
We have to vote, don't we?
Oh, did we not vote on that one? Oh, sorry, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. It's been a long meeting. Sorry, everyone. So the next is the report of the fire chief, and there was the fireworks alternatives report. And we had a couple subcommittee recommendations. First was the this, there was a sub, subcommittee recommendation that the request was to amend the time period in which fireworks can be sold as outlined in the fireworks bylaw from, was to change it from 14 to seven calendar days. And a reduction in the number of locations that can sell fireworks in the city, be referred to staff for review. Is there a mover and a seconder for that recommendation? Or for that motion, moved by Counsel Burbak, seconded by Counselor Henderson. Comments or questions on that? Counsel Clifford?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, like, how does that help to have it in Stratford, where I can go to, like, Kitchener or London to buy it? Like, I, I don't understand how that really helps any, but possibly I can, someone can help me with that.
I think if I remember from the subcommittee conversation, it's that you're just reducing the opportunity to, to buy, like, we have had this past year, quite a bit of fire, home fireworks activity that fell right at, well outside of our, our allowable in the bylaw. And that if you reduce the, the easy availability of fireworks, you may be reducing the, the, the frequency with which people are buying them and using them outside of the allowable bylaw. I believe it. Who was, who else was that subcommittee? I think that was the conversation, yeah, around that. Any other comments or questions, Counsel Gaffney?
I don't remember what I said at subcommittee. I may not have said anything at all, but I'm not going to support trying to restrict where people, if somebody wants to sell legal product in Stratford and it's within the bounds of the law, then I'm not going to tell them that I think we have too many fireworks salespeople, just like I'm not going to tell the coffee shop owners that we got too many coffee shops in Stratford. So I'm not going to support this. This thought, thanks.
Any other comments or questions on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Proposed? So that's defeated. So then we have another recommendation from the subcommittee, is that the report from the fire chief on firework alternatives be received for information. And that the report be shared with the city organizations that produce annual firework shows. Moved by Counsel Gaffney, seconded by Counsel Beatty. Any discussion on that item? Seeing then, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. And item number nine is reported the city clerk, and it was a request to consider fully or partially subsidizing community society surrender fee. And there was a subcommittee recommendation that the report entitled request to consider fully or partially subsidizing the community society surrender fee be received for information. And that the request to partially or fully subsidize surrender fees be filed. Moved by Counsel Burbak, seconded by seconded by Counsel Gaffney. Discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's carried. Thank you. I'm really sorry about my slow computer tonight. Item number 10, everything else on that is for the information of the committee. There aren't any other motion other than motion to adjourn, moved by Counsel Henderson, seconded by Counsel Clifford, all in favor? Opposed if any, and thank you very much, everyone, for the longest ITS subcommittee we, or committee we've had in quite some time.
Thank you, Counsel Vassilakos. Just before we move on through the clerk, I would like to request a seven-minute break before we move into the finance and labor. If that's, can be. If that's okay. So if we could, everybody maybe rejoin at 6:14, 6:15, and then we'll move into the finance and labor. Thank you.
If that's okay, so if we could, everybody maybe rejoin at six fourteen, six fifteen, and then we'll move into the finance and labor, thank you. Just waiting on Councilor Clifford, and there he is, the floor is yours, Councilor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, item, I'll call this meeting of the. Finance and Labor Relations Committee to Order. Item number, item number two, disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, item three, subcommittee means are attached. Item four, delegations non-scheduled, item five, report of Festival Hydro Inc. Five point one, financial statements and commentary for Festival Hydro Inc. For Q two and the June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one. Motion by Councilor Bunting. Seconded by Councilor Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed if any, carried. Item six, report of Rise Zone Networks. Six point one, financial statements and commentary for Rise Zone Festival Hydro Services, Inc. For Q two and the June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Moved by Councilor Clifford, seconded by Councilor Henderson, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed if any, carried. Before we adjourn, Mr. Chair, there's something I'd like to bring up when we're back in regular session. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilor Vassalacos, seconded by Councilor Burbak, all those in favor? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair Gaffney, but just a note that the mayor had to step away for a few moments. And I will turn it back to the clerk for reconvene, then clerk, whenever you're ready.
Are you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma, item fifteen point one is declarations of pecuniary interest, are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Seeing none.
Item fifteen point two is committee reports, and item fifteen point two point one is from the Planning and Heritage Committee, and that's to consider item five point two, the modification to draft approved sub plan of subdivision thirty one T eighteen dash zero zero one A. And that's for forty, forty eight, fifty, sixty, sixty six, and seventy two, daily avenue revised conditions of draft approval.
Mover for that item, so moved by Councilor Bunting, seconded by Councilor Henderson, discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's one opposed, and that's carried.
And through Deputy Mayor, my understanding, your final item is fifteen point three, reading up the bylaws, and there is one bylaw listed for consideration, that's bylaw eleven point four, the confirmatory bylaw, and it requires first and second and third and final reading.
Just before we go there, Councilor Gaffney, did you have an item that you wanted to address prior to?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And this is a question through you to either clerk or Ms. Thompson. Back under new business, when I brought up about confirming with some of our other boards. Their COVID nineteen policies, should I have put that in the form of a motion? Because I don't think I did, and I got thinking that maybe I should have.
I'm looking to the C A O or to the clerk for direction on that item. Can you unmute yourself, Ms. Thompson, please?
Sorry, thank you, thought I did, through you, Deputy Mayor, yes, I'm just checking the notes here, yes, so if we could have that formalized in a motion and a vote. To direct staff, that would be appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, then I I will make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and Councilor Vassalacos will second that, discussion on that. And I believe the clerk has the understanding of that motion. My, thank you. Seeing no hands for discussion, I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous, thank you, and thank you, Councilor Gaffney, for bringing that back.
Thank you.
So we're going to go back to the re, to the confirmatory bylaw, and so a motion for first and second reading of the confirmatory bylaw. Moved by Council Clifford, seconded by Council Bunting, all in favor? And that's unanimous, and third and final, Council Henderson and Council Beatty, all in favor? That's unanimous, and if there's nothing further than a motion to adjourns tonight's council meeting, Council Vassalacos and Council Burbak, thank you, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you very much, everyone.